The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
All right, we're reconvening into open session after being in closed session. Welcome everybody to this, our special board meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. And my understanding is we do not need to do another roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Laura Layton Warren has joined us. And I think we'll, I think we just move on with the agenda now. So, um, let's see here, the next thing we need to do is under action items. And we have some motions, and if you would like to go ahead, Nancy.
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second. Oh, sorry, Andrew. Any discussion, any questions? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. Laura Layton and Warren, it looks like you're not in here yet. Do you mind voting? Since.
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Next.
I move that the resignation of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Next, transfer of staff.
I move that the transfer of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
If I could acknowledge, you have one of the members that you just approved, Jenna Starry in the audience today, along with her father. Sorry dad, but this is a proud moment for Jenna. You just approved for her to move from interim to associate principal at Red Smith. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now get to work.
Uh, next, moving on to D head start budget carryover request from Grant.
I move that the head start grant award carryover request as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next on the agenda, low cost extension to extend CRSSA and ARP funds for major renovation of Head Start Learning Center.
I move that the low cost extension to extend the CRSSA and ARP funds totaling four hundred eighty thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars to be used in a major renovation of the Head Start Learning Center as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. James, are you able to vote online?
I did.
Oh, now it came through. Thank you. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next is F head start one time grant for major renovation of Head Start Learning Center.
I move that the one time grant application of two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars to be used in a major renovation of the Head Start Learning Center as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next, modify the table of organizations to change the school and community relations specialist to communication specialist and associated job description.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of school and community relations specialist, twelve months administrative salary group fifteen, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars to sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars to the position of communication specialist, twelve months, with no change in salary group, and that the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. Laura, are you able to vote online? Sorry, thanks. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next. Authorization to issue new superintendent contract. Laura?
I move that Dr. Claude Tiller, Jr. be offered a contract to serve as the next superintendent of the Green Bay area public school district.
Second.
All right, need discussion. Andrew.
I'm very excited to have the chance to welcome Dr. Tiller to the district. He was very impressive during his interviews, his willingness. We had emails even from students that he interacted with when touring schools that he is someone who is student centered, experienced, experienced in a very large urban district. And right, right from the get-go, he was wanting to learn about our district. And spend, spend time with the district. He went into, I don't know exactly what, exactly what he did, but he did some kind of participation in the dance classroom at Washington, and that's not, that's not required, that's above and beyond, and shows, it shows an interest in, and certainly someone who wants to be a leader who's visible out in the community and in the schools, and just brings, uh, brings a lot to our district, and I'm very excited.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? James, Brian? Okay. Um, all right, I think we are ready to vote. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Okay, that completes our special board meeting. Um, I believe I need to make, have someone make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Okay, we're adjourned, and then we're going to move directly into our work session. Oh, that's right, we need a minute. I need, I need, we're gonna take a quick break here. Are we going up? Okay, thank you, Josh. All right, I'd like to welcome you all to our work session for Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Let's see here. We'll need to take the roll call. Kinsey? Smith? Here. Becker?
Here.
McCoy? Here. Layton and Warren? Here. Welch? Here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Okay, everyone is in attendance. Um, we've got five, five board members here in person and two attending remotely. So that will, that will make our meeting interesting tonight, so just bear with us, folks. The next thing on our agenda is the open forum. We have a public forum. Um, it looks like we have, as of now, just one person who would like to speak. Leah Weekly? Would you like to please join us at the podium here? Can someone make sure that her, yeah, do we know?
Yep, 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 very good. You have five minutes, and please state your name and your address. Okay, Leah Weekly, three, four, six, seven, Yorkshire Road, Green Bay, five, four, three, one, one. And I'm just here, there's a lot of emotions running high about the school closing. And I guess I'm just trying to understand where all the kids are going, going to go on the east side. From a June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen boundary task force from the district, there were four different summaries of things, goals that they had found from, from this task force that they put together, and one of them was east side growth and how it's growing. And it was to monitor the development on the east side to accommodate the student growth. They were provided, the task force was provided expert testimony that the future growth will happen on the east side with several new housing developments. And they had a bunch of recommendations for them, and they said they weren't sure when this growth was going to happen. Currently, now it looks like they're trying to take away, Weak Rock is one of those schools from the task force, and looking at the current numbers, it looks like Bard already has five hundred thirty-five with a max capacity of six hundred for the school. Red Smith has a four hundred fifteen for this year and with a max capacity of four eighty-three. So with my math, just even taking out all those students from Weak Rock and putting them over there, not saying that they would all go to those schools, they might choose to go somewhere else. But that would leave fourteen openings between those, those two schools left. So I'm just trying to figure out where these students are planning on going. It just seems like there's so much new growth happening over there. We've also been told about behind red, or in the Red Smith neighborhood, that there's a housing development coming in to finish out kind of the rest of Red Smith that could bring in four to five hundred homes. And I haven't gotten the official documents for that, but I was, they were planning on sending it over this week. So I guess I'm just here with the concern of where are all these kids going to go if there's no new school coming in and Weak Rock's being taken out.
Is that, does that complete your remarks?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda, under presentations is a presentation for financial audit.
Good evening, I'm pleased to introduce John Treppman from CLA. He's the principal on our audit, and he's here to go over the twenty-one, twenty-two audit.
Well, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. With that, I'll kind of dive right in here. The goal of this meeting really is just a high level discussion on, on the audit results, and then some communication that's required from, from the audit firm, myself, to the governance, to the board. And then we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the, some of the financial information, really the fund balance and the general fund, just to kind of see how that ended the year, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And then I'll close just a few minutes on, on some GASB's that are coming up, or a GASB in particular that's coming up next year, so just so you're aware of that. So with that, I will get started. The, the independent auditors report, or the opinion that we issued on the Green Bay area public schools financial status for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two was an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. That is exactly what your internal controls, which operate, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, throughout the entire school year, throughout the entire fiscal year, hopes to achieve. That means all of your, your internal controls flowed into the financial statements properly. We did not have to make any material modifications to any, anything like that for the opinion for this year. So that's great news. With that, there's a couple required communications that goes with that opinion. And that is, this year in particular, and in the year two thousand twenty-two, GASB eighty-seven, which is the lease standard, was effective. So you may have heard some term, terminology on that and some changes coming up on that in the past few years. This has been coming down the road for about four years. Normally, GASB's and standards that come into place do not take that long, but because of COVID and other things, they, they basically delayed implementation until this year, two thousand twenty-two. It did not have a, a, a material effect on the, on entity's net position implementing, implementing GASB eighty-seven and the leases, but it did record about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of leases on your books, on your financial statements. The, the main takeaway of this lease is, you know, again, any agreements that are long-term, both receivable and payable to the district going forward now, including this year, have to be considered under this, and whether it's a liability or an asset. So again, that's effective in these financial statements. If we turn, if you're following along and turn to page eighteen of the financial statements, if you're not, that's perfectly fine. Page eighteen is the balance sheet, so I always like to focus a little bit and spend a minute or two on where the balance sheet ended, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Obviously, a balance sheet lists all of your assets for the district, general fund and other governmental funds, and liabilities for those same funds, and then fund balance. And I want to just zero in on the fund balance here. Your, your end fund balance of, of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two is sixty-eight million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's total fund balance. There's four categories of fund balance, and it's a hierarchy with most restrictive on the top to least restrictive on the bottom. So the most restrictive is obviously non-spendable fund balance. That's money that's tied up in your inventory and prepaid items as an asset. So therefore, you've spent the money. It's an asset, but you've already spent the money in, in two thousand twenty-two fiscal year for twenty-three fiscal year. So that's two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, fairly small dollar amount there. Restricted, you have two hundred and eighty-five thousand restricted. Again, this is available to you now in your fund balance, but it is restricted outside of the district. So there's a grant and other program-related requirements that require you to spend that money on that particular area outside of the district's control. Then below that, you have thirteen million dollars in what's called assigned fund balance. Assigned fund balance is really control of the school district, and they have, you have control of that money, however you have assigned it, you have earmarked it for a particular purpose. In this case, that thirteen million is earmarked for self-insurance, dental, and health claims that you will incur in the future. So you're kind of earmarking part of your fund balance as this is going to be used for that. Then you're left with unassigned, and that's the number I kind of want to focus on a little bit, fifty-four million, six ninety-six, five forty-seven. And that number really represents at the end of the year what you have left, kind of a reserve mentality as far as what you brought in to the fiscal year that we're currently in right now and over halfway through. That represents, if you compare that, that fifty-four million to your expenditures, in, in school district finance, you always like to compare that to expenditures for the, for the year, so three hundred and twenty-two, three hundred and twenty-two million, excuse me, in expenditures. If you compare that and, and turn that into a percentage, that comes out to roughly seventeen percent. And the reason why we do that is, is dollar amount of fund balance is really relative to the size of the district. And while that's important to every district individually, it's always nice to kind of compare and say, okay, from a universal health of financial statements, how are we doing? And seventeen percent is, is really between the recommended fifteen and twenty-five percent of unassigned reserve. Now again, keep in mind that thirteen million is something that you have taken upon yourself to assign, so really most of that is, is available. However, could potentially be used for claims. But again, when you look at that number, why is seventeen percent or fifteen to twenty-five percent important? Well, cash flow challenges face every single school district in Wisconsin because various grants, you know, a lot of your grants are not received until well into the year. Property taxes are not levied until January first of the following year, and not really settled until August, which is actually a year, a month after the fiscal year even ends. So there's always built-in cash flow challenges for every district. So having that, that minimum reserve is always very important for, for the, to combat that cash flow challenge. So again, good shape there as far as the fund balance. Any questions so far? Okay. I will conclude then really with, with just an open topic of, of another GASB coming up. And I'll spend a little bit of time on this because this is really going to be implemented in the year that we're almost done or nearing halfway done with here in twenty-three. And that is GASB ninety-six, and it's very closely related to GASB eighty-seven, the lease standard, but it's for IT-based subscriptions. And what they're trying to do is trying to get all these agreements that are, that are more than one year for subscriptions, for software subscriptions. And really determine whether or not there's a liability there. And when you have a multi-year situation, if you're entering into a multi-year subscription for software, currently you just basically record that when you, when you pay it. Now, under this GASB, you're going to be required, much like the lease, to kind of inventory all those agreements and decide whether or not there's a liability. So without getting too technical, the, the, what you need to know of that is as a district of your size, and even districts that are, that are, you know, far smaller than you are, are running into a challenge here where there's considerable subscriptions. We're talking in the hundreds at a, at a school district, just in the normal operations. You have software upon software, both in the educational side and the support side. I, I did a, a, a fairly, a medium-sized district, and they, they figured they had two hundred and fifty subscriptions. So this is going to be time-consuming. And again, the takeaways are, spend the time to inventory that, and then determine which ones are going to be actually applicable to, to the GASB. We don't think it's going to be nearly as many as, as you have to begin with. So it's just going to be a process of elimination because any kind of indefinite subscriptions, in other words, that they don't end, it's not for a period of time, do not count. Anything less than a year or a year do not count. So there's only going to be a finite amount in that, in that level, but we still are concerned that with school districts, it's going to be far more than any other sector in the, in the government world. So start that early, reach out to us with any questions you have. So again, we're, we're going to get some information out fairly quickly as far as templates and things like that for spreadsheets to help you out. So. Any other questions on the audit itself? I'd be happy to go through anything else, but that is all I had to go through today.
Um, I just, do you mind if we, so something that stuck out to me making my way through this document is found on page thirteen.
Sure.
Under factors bearing on the district's future. Now, people at the board table here, none of this is surprising to us because we, you know, we've been talking about some of these things for a long time. But there's a, basically some bullet points here that talk about things that we're going to be facing in the future. And and those, those, some real, some really big issues.
Correct.
For people who are watching this and maybe watching from home, these bullet points are going to, they're driving a lot of our, the narrative right now about the, how we're handling money here in our district right now. And I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, but can, I don't know if you, you mind just kind of maybe highlighting those a little bit?
Sure, sure. Just, just thirty seconds here. This section that you're referring to on page thirteen is actually the management's discussion and analysis. So just for, for, for viewers and, and users or trying to understand the financial statements, this section, the management discussion analysis, is actually written by the district. And what it's designed to do, and the standards are designed to, to require this, this part of the document, is really for the district to kind of discuss exactly what you're talking about, various things that are important. So again, this was written by the district, just want to, want to make sure that that's clear. And, and it really goes through what a lot of districts, yours in particular, is, are really facing. And, and again, you're, you're facing decreased enrollment. Again, a lot of districts are facing that. That certainly becomes a challenge when, when, you know, again, your, your enrollment, this is really what drives some of the, the money you get, right, the money to fund it. And then the ESTER dollars are really, are really important because there's a lot of federal money coming into districts right now with, with ESTER, ESTER two, in some cases ESTER three, and, and, you know, again, there is, there is a, a kind of a, a use of this, a, a significant use of this in, in last year, starting last year, this year, and then all the current year. And the, the, the real challenge, or the real concern, I guess, is what's going to replace that, right, in the future? And as you spend that money, there could be more federal dollars like that coming, but as you, as that goes away, if it does, it's going to be a challenge. So again, that, that is you know, something that, that, that your district and other districts like yours are faced with. Again, the, the budget in the state, I won't spend a lot of time spent on that because I'm not an expert at the state level. But certainly challenges from that standpoint, as far as the budgets that are being passed on the state level, provide zero increases for revenue for all school districts throughout the state. So that's obviously, you know, the revenue side and the fund balance we talked about in that seventeen percent, that's going to be a challenge, right? If the revenue goes down, it's going to be a challenge for the districts and all districts to keep that up. And then that's the challenge that, that you face, not only the cash flow side of that, which I talked about, but just keeping it at the same level. And then your district passed a capital referendum in November of twenty-two in the amount of ninety-two point six million to pay for the cost of the school facility improvement, consisting of district-wide safety, security, building infrastructure, and athletic, athletic facility. Again, that's kind of just a kind of a current events type bullet. And then the district is undergoing a facilities master plan study to identify future capital needs and potential cost reductions. And then the district contributed two point nine million to Fund Seventy-Three to begin addressing the OPEB liability, and I'll just kind of spend one, one or two minutes on that. And the OPEB liabilities as, you know, as those are building and have been building over the years. And when support staff, teachers, and, and employees of districts start retiring, then that becomes a reality as far as payouts and things like that. So the whole idea of, of the, the Fund Seventy-Three is really to try to keep up with that funding, not to be caught where, you know, a number of people based on, on retirements, just in that particular. keep up with that funding, um, not to be caught where, you know, a number of people based on, on retirements, just in that particular year get caught on a huge cash outflow that they weren't expecting. And, and districts that do not fund pre-fund or try to pre-fund are faced with that, uh, just, just by chance and, and, and by demographics and things like that. So that's what you're trying to do. You're, you're contributing money as you go, and that's a big part of, of trying to stay on top of that. And that's extremely important. Uh, as that number is a fairly large number, obviously, at districts.
Right. Thank you so much. I just, I think these, these particular points are, are ones that we'll be making repeatedly over the coming months, um, to just remind people that these are out there on the horizon and there's no getting around them really. Um, so thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any questions? Anybody? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Have a good rest of your meetings.
You too. Thank you. Okay. All right, um, let's see, next on the agenda is B is other post-employment benefits report.
Good evening again, that's me.
Okay, Sarah.
Hi, Kinsey, would you mind pulling up the report that I had attached? The, or I sent you to attach the agenda? And I can't see if she has it pulled up right now.
Yeah, just hang on a second, Sarah. We're working on it.
Thank you.
There we are.
There we go. So this is our, um, first annual OPEB trust annual report. Um, it is new this year because in April of twenty-twenty-one, the board established a Fund seventy-three for the district, and this is the first year that the district has transferred money into it to, uh, address future liability. Um, just a reminder or of the definition of Fund seventy-three. Um, it's used to account for resources held in trust for formally established benefit, um, plans, basically. So the fund applies to all post-employment benefit plans where the district is providing such benefits by contribution to a legally established irrevocable trust. So basically, we have an irrevocable trust for Fund seventy-three, and it's for our emeritus program. Um, in Fund seventy-three, PMA is our investment advisor. Um, you may recognize that name as PMA also advises us and manages a portion of our operating funds, our bond proceeds from the referendum, our Fund forty-six investment, and also some of our scholarship investments. Um, CESA six is the trustee of these funds and oversees a group of approximately fifty districts, um, including us, and they also provide legal guidance to us on the Fund seventy-three and the Fund seventy-three report. Um, BMO Bank is the custodian of the funds, that's where the funds are held. Um, Green Bay area public schools are invested one hundred percent in the moderate growth fund at PMA for Fund seventy-three. Um, so because this was new, the beginning balance of the fund was zero. Um, we earned just a small amount of interest of about five hundred and fifty dollars because there was a zero balance in the fund for the majority of the year. However, we did transfer in April of twenty-two, one point seven million dollars for the July to January trust payments, or emeritus payments, rather. Um, we then transferred one point two million dollars again in June for the January to June payments. And then at the end of the year, we had transferred two point nine million dollars, which will stay in the fund to address future liabilities. Um, the ending balance as of six thirty twenty-two was two point nine million dollars. Our, um, and, and John kind of touched on this, but our future liability, uh, for our study that we had done is about twenty-four million dollars. Um, so that two point nine million will go toward that. Um, that's just a brief overview of the report. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Nope, not at this time.
Okay, this is required every year, so I'll, you know, we'll be back every year with this report. Um, it is, uh, and there's not a set time, the report has to be approved, so, or presented, so we will come, um, you know, each year around this time.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Okay. Um, we're going to move on to see Green Bay Police Department, um, on recent drug trends.
Okay, uh, Brown County has declared fentanyl a health crisis. And a couple of months ago, uh, the board had requested more information. Uh, we spoke to the Green Bay Police Department and we're fortunate enough to have Detective Meter join us tonight to share some information specific to fentanyl.
Welcome. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, so I'm Detective, uh, with the Green Bay Police Department. Uh, I've been there about twenty years. I rotated recently out of the Brown County Drug Task Force, uh, last year where I had spent four years. Since I've been at the police department, um, backing detectives, my caseload primarily are overdose-related deaths, uh, most specifically, uh, with fentanyl and any of the narcotics. So I'm, I'm just going to give you guys like a brief overview of what is, what is fentanyl? Why is everybody talking about it? Why is it so bad? And, uh, decent time for any questions you guys might have. So fentanyl was produced and it's a synthetically-produced, uh, pain medication. Um, but with its recent demand in the illicit drug world, it's also not just pharmaceutically produced, but illicitly produced in labs. That comes into importance a little bit later. Uh, it really wasn't in the mainstream, uh, as far as like a, a pain medication that was abused or anything up until recently. Uh, and to put it a little bit in perspective, uh, heroin, everybody talks about heroin, how potent that is. Well, fentanyl is roughly fifty times more potent than, uh, what heroin is. So when you look at this slide here, it has a penny, and that has approximately two milligrams of fentanyl displayed next to the penny to put it in perspective or a size of what, uh, the amount of fentanyl that is required to induce a respiratory depression, uh, in a person, and then that would result in death. Uh, as mentioned before, Brown County is, what I believe, I believe it's the second county, uh, currently in the state of Wisconsin, who has recognized fentanyl as being a, uh, community health crisis due to the number of overdose saves and deaths and the amount of resources that are going to go into, uh, fighting fentanyl. So we're going to touch a little bit tonight on, uh, fentanyl in the form of Percocet pills and how these kind of came onto the mainstream. Uh, so Percocet for, if you don't know, Percocet is a pain medication, uh, that is prescribed. It's essentially made of acetaminophen and oxycodone. Uh, and it's usually used when other pain medications, uh, haven't been tolerated or you've kind of reached your tolerance level with them. So Percocets come in. Uh, Percocet started becoming, um, a pill that was being abused, and that's where drug dealers have kind of moved into this market with the illicit pills. So on this screen here, uh, if you'd noted the, the broken pill, that's approximately the two milligrams is circled right there. And so that amount in one pill is what's going to induce a lethal dose. Uh, as of recently, the DEA is now saying that six out of every ten pills, so if I were to hand out ten of these illicit pills to you, four of you are going to receive a dose that you're going to do expect as a, a typical high that you would be seeking, maybe nothing at all, because it could just be acetaminophen or some other cut or filler inside of it. And then six of you will most likely receive a, a dose that will be fatal to you and require some other medical intervention. Uh, last year, oops, sorry, people back. Last year in twenty-twenty-two, the Brown County Drug Task Force, as of, uh, October, they seized, uh, just over forty-six thousand of these fentanyl-laced pills. Uh, I would imagine by the end with the reporting, we're probably closer to fifty thousand would be a fair, fair guess on that one. All of these pills are, um, related to our overdose deaths and saves that we have. Last year, we had eighty-one saves related to fentanyl and these pills, and there were thirty deaths related to fentanyl, not all necessarily pills, but related to fentanyl. Uh, this year, as of this morning, I currently have twenty saves and nine deaths, uh, that are related to the fentanyl. These are only, these numbers are only law enforcement accounted numbers. This is when law enforcement's contacted, I get involved, uh, please show up and do it. So these don't account for anyone who self-reported to treatment facilities, hospitals, anything like that. Uh, so these are on the, the scale, these would be the very low end of what we're actually looking at for numbers. So these, as counterfeit pills, it's a picture of a, a big bag of pills that was seized by the Drug Task Force. They're made in clandestine labs, um, the synthetics are illicitly made as, as well. There's no quality control that goes into it, so they become so dangerous, then it's kind of a roll of the dice of what you're going to get as far as a dose when it comes to the pills because the mixtures are not consistent or even as you would receive in a pharmaceutical grade where every single Percocet is, uh, a specific amount of that narcotic inside. These are just, you know, whatever you might get in that pill. So they're popular now with drug dealers because of the profit margin is so substantial, uh, as opposed to with other narcotics. Right now, you can go to a border state, you can pick up a pill anywhere from, you know, a dollar or less, sometimes as low as eight cents for a pill, depending upon the quantity in which you are purchasing, and most people are purchasing thousands of pills at a time. And then they transport them or will ship them up, uh, to wherever the distribution is going to be at here in Green Bay. And then on the streets, they'll sell, you know, ten to twenty-five dollars, uh, for a pill. Typically, the opioids were going for about one dollar per milligram. So these were, uh, these are M thirties, so thirty-milligram pills. They were going for thirty dollars apiece, but since they're so prevalent, they can still obtain almost that same price. So if you're paying a dollar a pill and now you know, you're making thirty dollars, you have a twenty-nine-dollar profit, um, and very little overhead. You don't have uh, powders and everything else to mess with. So some of the slang terms, if you're going through notebooks, you're reading or you're hearing people talk about them, they're referred to as M thirties, M boxes, Irks, Perks, Blues, anything along those lines is kind of just how they're generically referred to. So this slide here is showing on the top left, uh, from the DEA, these show an actual legit pharmaceutical-grade, uh, Percocet M thirty. And they're called M thirties because they're imprinted on, as you can see, one side of the M and the other side is, uh, the thirty. Down below, uh, these are pressed and these are the illicit ones. You can tell the slight differences in them. Uh, but if you're not prescribed these or you're just gaining these from whoever, you might not know the difference in these. So the ways that, uh, fentanyl, not just these pills, but fentanyl in general is going to be ingested, typically it's going to be smoked or snorted, uh, and some people will intravenously take it. Uh, the pills will sometimes be crushed and then they'll heat up the tinfoil underneath and burn it that way, and then they'll smoke it in. So if you're finding burnt tinfoil pieces laying around and everybody thinks, oh, that's kind of weird, there's burnt tinfoil. Typically, they're burning a narcotic, something like a, a Percocet or something on top of that. So if you're coming across somebody who has the signs of an overdose or might have ingested an opioid, you're going to see they're going to have a confused state. They're going to start to be drowsy. That's why they're considered downers. You'll go, hear them called downs. Uh, you'll get that change in the pinpoint pupils, which uh, fentanyl is made to start to slow your breathing, which when you have a slowed breathing, you're going to have less oxygen flowing through your system, which is going to turn your lips blue, your fingernails blue, you're going to get the bluing of the face. Uh, your clammy skin. Essentially, your respiratory system is failing and it's shutting down because of the fentanyl, and that's going to lead to the respiratory failure and then ultimately death. So when I talk about this slide, uh, when officers are te- field testing these, because we might field test them or they might look legit and they might field test negative, and then somebody would say, oh, okay, that might have been, okay. But if you remember back that slide, the crushed pill, and I only took that little tiny amount. So when I break a piece of the pill off and I, I do the test on it, I might just be getting the acetaminophen or some other cutting agent and not the actual, uh, illicit drug inside there. So, uh, they're hard and they usually have to be sent off to a lab to, to be actually officially tested.
What happens if that would come into contact with your skin?
If it's just bare skin, from what I'm told by the medical professionals and by no means by a medical professional, however, what I'm told is if it comes in contact with your skin, you can just brush it off, you could wash it off, soap and water. So long as you don't have any open cuts or, or wounds where it would, you know, like, like any other thing that would come in contact with an open wound, uh, you should have no, no effect.
Thank you.
So when we talk about, uh, opioids and overdoses, we also talk about naloxone hydrochloride, uh, otherwise commonly referred to as Narcan by the brand name. So it's a opioid antagonist drug. Uh, what it does is when you administer Narcan, um, either typically done through the nasal cavity, there's two different models. You can see up there, there's a syringe model, otherwise there's just the, the squeeze, uh, depressor model. That, uh, counteracts the effects of the opioid in your system. Um, right now, we are administering out the four-milligram, the one on the top left. All officers carry Narcan with them, rescue squads carry Narcan with them. It is Narcan has become, uh, just another piece of equipment and gear that we carry on. Uh, we administer lots and lots of Narcan every year to people. Um, these are four-milligram ones now because the amount of fentanyl that people are ingesting at one time has gone up, so it has required more Narcan at one time. Some people require just one administration of Narcan, some people require multiple doses of Narcan initially, and then a continuation of the Narcan. Uh, because it will work with the opioids that are in your system, but once the Narcan wears off, you could relapse back into another, um, overdose. So that's pretty much the, the quick version of fentanyl, the overview of what it is, kind of why it's on the scene right now, why everybody is, is uh, searching it out. So if you guys have any questions?
Uh, I have a question. I don't know if anyone else has their hand up there. What can we do as a board to help out?
Well, education, start with the education. Um, it's my understanding you guys are pushing out a fentanyl education right now uh, to some of the students, so I would start there. Uh, Narcan on hand in your, your buildings, uh, we have it throughout the police department and you'll see it in a lot of other, like, private sector buildings are now stocking Narcan on hand. Uh, Narcan has no, my understanding is Narcan has no negative effects. So if I suspect you of having an opioid overdose, I can administer Narcan to you and it, it wouldn't adversely affect you if you're not having that. Any other questions?
Anybody? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, um, next on our agenda under education. Um, Andrew, that will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you. Our first item is the uh, Canvas Mastery Connect Purchasing Recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. This is, um, has been a long-needed learning management system we're bringing forward to the board for approval. Uh, it allows us to Uh, it allows us to use our own faculty to teach our online classes, which is, like I said, long, long needed, uh, because we would also be using uh the board approved curriculum. Following Board Policy six seventy-two, what we're presenting to you um in Board Docs is the plan. It's a six-year contract. In terms of the contract, they've been reviewed and are in compliance with district practices and uh Melissa and her team were able to review those contracts. Um, the rollout plan is included. Again, it's a six-year license that uh we are asking the board to consider or vote at the next board meeting.
Well, questions?
Is this one of the software things he was talking about before?
Yeah, it would be.
Uh, other questions? Uh, Brian or James?
No, I get it.
Okay, uh, Dawn?
When will we have this fully implemented?
Uh, Nancy, you can yell out if I get this wrong, but I believe within uh four years, it would be. It's a, it's a long and complicated process, um, but very, very worth it.
Why don't you go ahead and hit the microphone?
Yes, so I
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we couldn't hear any of that. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we'll be beginning with our first adopters and have been, we already had a few uh teachers that taught summer school on the Canvas platform. Um, but um we will be adding more. Um, as I go out in the schools, I have more and more teachers asking if they can be first adopters. So that will be coming very shortly after, in if the board does adopt. Um, this will provide for us a phenomenal, a phenomenal opportunity to really monitor the progress of our students, ensure that teachers have the tools that they need to differentiate instruction rate at their hand, right, right at, right at their, right on their screen, right? It's no looking anywhere else for that information. Um, also, the assessments will all be taken, will measure the assessment to the standards, help us to better understand the demand of the standards and teachers will then choose activities to help have that class or that opportunity of learning come alive.
So, um, can I ask a question about the rollout plan? So you say you're in early adopter phase right now. Um, and I, I, I'm sure that you don't have the exact number of teachers in that cohort off the top of your head, but um I think Vicki indicated that fully implemented in year four, is that year four of this particular contract? And so the, what I'm looking at, cost-wise, um, where we're spending um, you know, free force of the contract value to get us to a full adoption. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. That's an excellent question. The important piece to, to, to see is that there's there are many uh parts of our district that will be using the platform to the full capacity for what that is needed to be used for. When I say full implementation, that would mean every teacher in their secondary uh middle school and also our uh high school will be fully um competent in operation, in operation, the operational uh operationalizing um both uh in structures, Canvas and Mastery Connect. So when, there will be individuals throughout the system that will be immediately using this platform to the full capacity. But then when we look at bringing this across, for instance, all of our courses that are running under twenty, if we're gonna match, we will start the online live immediately and start developing those courses. So as the district needs this all the way up to the fourth year, the beginning of the fourth year is when we'll say that is our goal to have everyone's in the secondary schools uh feeling confident in using and instructing on the Canvas platform. Does it, does that make sense?
It does, but I think it's too broad a stroke for me. So if, if, you know, and I, I recognize that this being a working session, we have a couple of weeks. Um, I would like to follow up on with you because what I'm looking at is a the cost per student is extreme until we get to implementation, right? So I'd like to know if there is documentation of the plan or something that I can review just to understand what the adoption rate between, in those first four years is, right? And if, if it makes, um, if it makes sense, because if we're talking about a couple of um programs and we're talking hundreds of students or thousands of students, I, I don't understand that the glide path um to adoption. Um, if it's, you know, kind of parabolic, you know, we were, where we, we, it's very expensive and then in year three, we're gonna, you know, start loading, you know, uh, and really demanding um, some, some level of adoption or if it's pretty linear. Um, and over the course of those four years, uh, the, the cost, you know, decreases per student uniformly.
Absolutely. I'd be glad to go over the uh plan specifics, but it builds up. So every year as we accomplish, is we're all over the board right now. We're bringing in a platform to meet a lot, several of our district needs. And so we are taking one piece at a time. Uh, as you note in the cost, our most expensive year, professional learning, working with our consultants from instructure will be in that very first year. Now, we'll be bringing everyone along in the professional learning. When I say operational, that means self-sustaining, being able to depend on each other, to work within the system with confidence. Um, but we will be building that capacity all along. We may get there sooner than what we're anticipating, uh, depending on the need of the platform to meet the district's needs.
Yeah, so you know, my, my takeaway is you probably have a plan that if I could just, if, if we could sit down and review it, um, to make sure I understand that rollout plan. I get the numbers, um, but you know, concerns with large projects like these is actual adoption, um, and making sure that in year four, we don't have a crisis of having an expensive software package in-house and low adoption. Um, and that's in, understanding a plan between those two points would help me um justify the spend.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And this is S or dollars we're using for this. Okay. I um, I sat on the NWTC committee as we went through the RFP, so I did get to see lots of LMS systems. Canvas is the Cadillac. I mean, and I, I don't mean that from a cost standpoint. All um all cloud-based software is expensive, but it is from um a usability standpoint, both for teachers and for students, it is the best you're gonna, it is the best you're gonna get. Um, I share James' concerns and I understand Nancy and I have talked about this. The college was able to implement, we'll, we will implement Canvas in a year. But we're implementing from an existing LMS, so we're able to take all our core shells from Blackboard and have them systematically put into Canvas where the district has to go through and we have to have our teachers build all those core shells. So um, I understand it does, it does take a long time to do. Nancy and I've talked, talked about this a lot. It is a really good system and I think as we look at um as we look at online or online learning and I think we're gonna talk about, you know, it's some having struggles finding um, teachers in specialty classes. So when we look at like our foreign languages, um and having that option of having a really robust LMS where we are able to offer an online class and have teachers, you know, have one Spanish teacher who is able to teach a class across the district and I think Canvas will enable that. Um, I agree with James. I think it's really, really important that we have a plan to implement it in a timely manner. I also understand the challenges of doing that with have, you know, this being the first LMS, but I think I think a district our size not having an LMS is a huge miss on our part. So I, I think this is a good thing and um I would like to know what that implementation plan is too.
Yeah, I, I'll just follow. So Dawn, I agree with you. I, I, I see the potential of this and I get it, right? I'm, I, I appreciate being able to distribute this content across our different facilities and have an instructor be able to um lead these um hybrid virtual slash in-person classes or however we manifest. It's just, you know, that resourcing, it can't be someone's second job, right? Um, to do these kind of implementations, that plan has to have a resource commitment to it. And that's what I would, the, the part of it I would like to understand, you know, you, you did a better job articulating the problem is, you know, to say implement that, you know, adopt this is, you know, the easy part. Uh, actually providing all the resources and actually building out those classes and those shelves. Um, I'd like to know how that gets done.
Your, your private sector's coming out, James. Six years ago, I would have, I, I, I know exactly where you're coming from.
If it helps you to know, we have already begun building out those shelves and the blueprints and the transcript, we're already in a Canvas contract. And so building that, those components up, our department has taken that on. And we've been working with the consultants from instructure and they are, they're guiding our next steps. And then our folks, our, our, our professionals are actually doing the building out of the blueprint and the components that will be consistent throughout the district. And then this summer, there will be a two-day training for all teachers that will then show them how to uh, give them the opportunity to build their courses based on the students in their class, activities that they uh found to be suc- successful for them and meeting the standards. So a, a lot of this grounding work is already starting. Um, yeah, I guess to say in four years, I mean, when I say sustain, when I mean sustainable, that would be like we have operational systems, we're self-sustaining, we have it in our schools where they can help each other to, to continue that learning, uh, new employees coming into the district, there's a plan in place to board them on and to support them. Uh, so that's like, that's the pipe dream, right? But along the way, we're going to be adding and learning and bringing new new uh administrators on and also uh new teachers on during that whole process. But I'd, I'd love to, it's really pretty complex to go over in a quick meeting here.
Laura?
Um, I'm not sure how to ask this question. How, how does this platform work when you have a substitute teacher?
Well, they would have access to the learning platform. The students have access to the learning platform.
Okay.
And all of those technic, those technical components, uh, that's where we have Eric here. He's working with Nick behind the scenes to make sure all those technical components get put in place before we have an open launch, but the time is ticking for the immediate need of the district and then we just continue to build and add for the next stages of it. Um, so yes, absolutely. And the students are very, it's actually gonna be much simpler for a substitute teacher because the teacher's leaving the whole lesson already prepared for them.
That's what I was wondering, like, is this gonna actually benefit?
Absolutely.
Our, our, our district with regard to subs, which is a daily struggle, you know?
It will improve the quality of our instruction on a daily basis. Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Hey, uh, can I just, can I follow just for a second? Um, Nancy, in dealing with your pilot group or your early adopters, have you seen any resistance from those early adopters in, in the form of, you know, I have to recreate my lesson plans and the amount of work to get it set up?
We have not had any, in fact, when I visit the schools, they wanna know when are we get, when are we starting this? We hear we have it, when are we gonna get to start using it, right? Like, which is very encouraging. Um, there will be parts of the system that we will transfer out of our department, the teachers um, information into the blueprint for them, so the teachers don't have to duplicate it. For instance, our interim assessments that they all uh wrote last year, we won't ask teachers then to recreate the interim assessments into the blueprints. That will all be done behind the scenes for them.
So we've had a limited contract with Canvas since summer of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? Okay. Okay.
Second year, next year would be our third year.
We were gonna implement class, we have classes implemented already, right? The, the, we were health, then there were core classes we were gonna implement. How many classes do we have on there now and how does that, how's that been looking?
We have four courses on there that are the most popular courses for summer school that we ran last year. Those are in, those are up and, and running uh for those that wanna use those. Um, and then we just keep building our bank. Uh, it's, if everyone lifts together, it's not as overwhelming as it might be if you had just a few people leading and working on this project. Um, so I thought you were gonna ask me if our third year of this contract is actually gonna be the first year of the one that I brought to you. That's why there, it's a reduced cost for the first year, because all, we've already paid for Canvas. All we're adding to it is Mastery Connect for that first year. And as you can see, it's really heavily front-loaded with our professional development for our staff and administrators. And anyone, if you're interested in coming to any of the trainings, please let me know, is we at the end of March have a couple of those scheduled that you're, you're more than willing to see how the people behind the scenes are really preparing this system and how those that are out there using it um have found this to be very effective. Uh, they, those that use it for summer school, nothing but positive feedback.
You said that they can choose to use that in the summer, so it's not like required?
It is not required. Um, it's, we are, we are having it be required for the online, when we teach online summer school, because that's the platform we want students to become familiar with. Uh, please note that the UW system and, and WTC, um, that this is the platform that all of the Wisconsin higher education uses also. So we're giving our students an opportunity to learn in a very robust learning management system prior to graduation. So they're not learning a system to, how to learn within. They can, they're really in there, uh, when they move to college, they're really focusing on the content that you're to learn, not how to find the content within a learning management system.
Yeah, for students, I mean, it's, uh, it's a couple hours to become proficient in the tool. It's a really, really slick tool.
All right, anything else? Okay, well, that'll move forward then to uh next week. Thank you. And then we have a uh world language recommendation.
Ms. Smith had alluded to our difficulty in finding faculty. No, I, I think that was a great tee-up for this because it's true. Um, we do struggle in filling some of our vacant faculty positions in specialized courses. So Canvas obviously will help us a lot there, but but we want to be able to prevent what happened this year. prevent what happened this year from ever happening again, where we had to cancel foreign language for second semester at one of our middle schools. And it's not easy to do that. And we, we need to do better and we want to do better. And that's what this proposal is all about. We are recommending to the board that we shift our credit-bearing foreign language classes at the middle school to the eighth grade. We are confident that shifting to the eighth grade will allow us to, well, not, not allow us to, we will have the faculty, the certified instructors to meet that. So that would be at the eighth grade. And with that, one of the shifts, Veeven Sawyer, you may recall, if you took foreign language in middle school, you met every other day. This proposal would be meeting every day, which we know is best when learning a foreign language. And then for the seventh grade, we would create an exploratory class. So we could focus on multiple languages, including, is Angela Combe here? Including Oneida, including Oneida. This is something that is a long time coming. And our hope is that the board will let us implement this plan. We think it'll meet the needs of our middle schoolers, perhaps even expand the interest in learning foreign languages and certainly learning more about our own community.
Questions?
Andrew, I have one. I just want to know if it's been taken into consideration, what the domino effect would be with the schedule switching from every other day to a full day? And how our school counselors are kind of adjusting to that or how they would?
Brian, we're asking Nancy to come back up and respond to that.
Thank you.
There is a transition plan that is actually, has been developed. Right now, our, our students and our counselors in the staffing process are just going forward with what we have in place right now. And then we determine if we have a shortage in Spanish teachers. And then we have this, as, as Spire had mentioned, we have this as an alternative so that there will be no student that goes without a world language experience. So yes, there is in the adaptation between them. They're, they're working on, behind the scenes on both platforms. Brian, whether if we have to flip in the middle in September because we don't have enough staff, we're going to have to go through the same counseling and the reshuffling of staff and students who have an option, whether they want to take this seventh, this, first of all, eighth grade Spanish or French a full year, or if they choose to take, they, they choose to take another elective or, or exploratory course. Same with the seventh graders, if they really had their heart set on Spanish, then they would have the opportunity for the world language experience or to choose another, another elective. Did, did I answer your question?
I kind of, and I know it's a very specific question on there. If you could email me the transition plan when you get a chance, I'd appreciate it.
Very good.
Hey, other questions? Laura?
I'm glad to hear about the, excuse me, the potential offering of the Oneida language. Would that just be at Lombardi or would that be available at the other middle schools?
That will be, that's the, the, the part that we're really working hard on. It would be equitable across the entire, all middle schools would have the same opportunity for the same learning. So that would go across all. And the, the course is going to be developed, facilitated by the teaching and learning department, but many multiple stakeholders and teachers within the district, like many of our courses, when we bring them to you that are not fully developed, but we're looking to develop that course, that will be developed prior to the start of the school year. So there will be teachers that will be developing that course.
Other questions?
Yes, Andrew. And so I understand the move of the the credit-bearing course to the eighth grade. I, I think I understood that portion. I didn't necessarily understand going, coming in that there would be a uniformity of the offerings at the seventh grade level. So I'm still trying to process that. There are, there are specialty schools in the district as well. And when you reference middle schools, are you saying that it is inclusive of those specialty schools, that everyone, the only opportunity would be a seventh-grade world languages offering?
The current world language offering would be for all of our comprehensive middle schools. If there were interest at any of our specialty schools for that world language course in seventh grade, they definitely would have the opportunity.
But not constrained to it. If they, if they had curriculum or resources to do other things. I could accept get credit for the Spanish schools, right? You're saying credit will start at the eighth grade. What they do at seventh grade, some of those schools have curriculums that they've crafted and tailored. It's just, I'm just trying to understand if they are resources to do other things are going to be dispersed and they, the, the opportunity that they have is this world, world language course.
Yeah. Yes, every, every school that teaches in the district that has a seventh grade class for world language, at the middle school level would have the opportunity to offer this course. I don't want to get too much in the weeds around our specialty schools because they pretty much have control over what they are teaching. They're autonomous to what they teach.
Sure.
So I can only speak on behalf, other than the fact they would all have access if they chose to run that course.
Thank you. That's, that's, that was the crux of my, my question is if this was a directive to run this course or if it was an opportunity to run the course. Thank you.
I, I have a follow-up with that. Speaking of the specialty schools, you mentioned that they have their ability with their own, I, I forgot how you just phrased it. To kind of have what makes them unique. So if a student at one of the specialty schools wanted to take this as a seventh grade class, how would they go about doing that?
So I would, I would say that we'd have to think through that because it would be a middle school offering. And then the offering is typically operated to the whole building of, of the comprehensive schools and then across the entire district. So if you had a specialty school that wanted to take this course, then someone in there that staffed in their school would be the teacher of record for this. And this is a beautiful piece about this. There's no special licensure that's attached to it. So they would be able to take the course in their specialty school. They would just have to work with the principal to have the course run there.
Okay, I want to make sure that that's an opportunity for all of our students because a lot of times you hear some of the specialty schools are kind of losing what makes them unique from different guidelines and directives coming down. So I want to make sure that that's still is an option for students at all of our schools. So thank you.
Okay, other questions? I'll, I'll call on myself then. So if we do this in eighth grade, you're committing essentially two elective slots then to foreign language. So that's a, that means you won't have any, any other elective slot, which is a pretty big deal. And I'd be concerned that it might be taking someone out of foreign language. So I guess have we looked at? Have we looked at, I understand it's staff shortage driving it, is, is putting this together in this way and make it easier to get the teachers? Is that, is that less bad than if we had to? If the alternative was that we may have to hire some emergency or provisional staff, or can we not even get those in foreign languages?
That's, you just nailed the problem. We can't even get that.
Okay. If there was a, if there was a short supply of certified but a ready supply of emergency or close, maybe we wouldn't be here, but we don't even have that.
Right. And in fact, Mike Freeze, who will be up here shortly with the presentation, just shared with us today that in the state of Wisconsin, only seven people were certified in French last year, Mike, for the entire state. And it was in the fifties, only in the fifties for Spanish in the entire state.
That's surprising, given that the language, the, so the, so the need for people to know more languages is going up and the number of teachers getting, people getting certified to teach it is plummeting. So that's, that's interesting, but not in a, not in a good way. And why does, I'm still, I'm still not sure I'm following the why the what is it because, because we know for sure, because we have the person for one year, we don't have to worry about having someone available for two years? Or what, what makes this? What makes it much, like, I understand that there might be some benefits of having it every day. But what is the, how does that make the staff availability so much better?
Well, the key piece, when you start looking at the staffing, it reduces the number of staff because it's seventh grade. You, that's a, that's a course, the course that we're developing does not require a special license. So if you have it all day for Spanish, the other key piece here is our new world language adoption of Spanish and French is far more in line with, and will prepare our students for the continuation of the world language into high school to the SEAL of Bilingual literacy or to AP world language. So it also is.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm very specifically, I'm, I'm only, I, I understand there's other advantages. I'm speaking just to the, just to the staffing. So I don't see the staffing advantage when we have essentially one teacher teaching Spanish, one A on day one and one B on day two, or teaching eighth graders on day one and day two. That's still one Spanish teacher in a building hypothetically?
And when we looked at that, we actually would be, depending on the number of students who enroll in Spanish one in eighth grade as a credit, high school credit-bearing course. So then we still give an opportunity for those that do not want to take Spanish to have the exploratory.
So I, I get it. I'm really just specifically though, again, if, okay, so if Franklin Mills who has one Spanish teacher, they have one, they would have one Spanish teacher if they were teaching sections of eighth grade Spanish on day one and, and day two and had several sections, right? Wouldn't we have also exactly one Spanish teacher if they were teaching day one, day two, seventh grade, eighth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade? And I'm only, I'm only speaking to staff. I'm not talking about other advantages or disadvantages of this, but I thought there was something said about how it helps with staff. And that's the part I don't get because it seems like you'd have one Spanish teacher needed either way. Push your mic.
One of the key pieces is that in seventh grade, in the, in the one A course, there's a lot of students who take the one A course. We have a twenty-seven to forty-six percent attrition rate from one A to one B. So kids aren't staying. So they're, they're taking half the course and then they're dropping. So we maintain teachers at the one A to teach that. And then about half of them drop across the district. So by eliminating that one A, you're, you're downsizing the number because, well, hopefully the numbers will increase, right? Hopefully the, we will still need teachers, but.
Okay, so it, the, the problem is not so much that the problem is that they're not, instead of teaching one A, one B, one A, one B, there might not be a one B of them to teach because too many left one A. And did so probably not, although it's a good, although it's a good course, I'm sure we do very well at teaching as they're half of, half of Spanish one, and then they quit. So they're not getting the value.
Exactly. So, so then they're not right. And it's un, it's unfortunate for a lot of reasons, right? Because they're not getting the value in the course. Then they're also not continuing on to SEAL by literacy or AP courses and getting those college credits. But that is one of the concerns that teachers have talked to me about, the attrition rate. And we've been trying to dig into and talk to students about why that might be happening. We just have very limited data right now. We gave students a survey to ask like, do you plan to continue? Why are you in Spanish class? Those types of questions to kind of dig into. I mean, some students are taking Spanish classes, maybe because their parents want them to or what have you. So then they end up dropping.
Nancy?
Could some of the reasons be why they're dropping because they've been dropped and you're having a hard time getting teachers?
No, not necessarily, because because they don't know, the students don't know that we have a hard time getting teachers. So like, at the middle school that was referenced earlier, they all wanted to take the course. My son goes to a middle school where the same thing happened. They want to take the course. And they think that there's a teacher because no one tells them that there's not going to be. But then we had to come back and say, this is the case of what's happening. And there isn't a teacher. So yeah, it's hard to pinpoint right now. I'd like to be able to give you more information and we'll continue to dig into that because we want the program to succeed. So we want to know why students are perhaps choosing to drop during that year. But that's the most significant drop we have. After Spanish two, we do have another drop. Because a lot of colleges require the two years of, of world language. So then they finish those two years and then they don't need anymore to be able to get into the college that they would like to go to. So then they, they don't plan to do something with the world language, then they may drop after that point. So our numbers go down a little bit there. But it's, it's unfortunate to see the drop between the one A and the one B because then essentially students put in the time and effort for half a credit. And they can't get it because they don't finish the course. And we'd really like to have middle school students succeed to be able to get that credit before they go to high school.
Did you have something, Brian, or did you just happen to pop up?
Okay, no, I did. Thanks, Andrew. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the exploratory nature of this in seventh grade too. And I think that, you know, as a middle school teacher, I think that may help with that retention rate as well, where they get a little taste of it beforehand. So I appreciate that effort for the seventh grade focus with it. I'm concerned with the scheduling options, but I've been told that there, it's in the works. So hopefully it doesn't cause too much homework for our, our counselors to get everything shifted. But the exploratory nature of seventh grade would, would be great. So thank you.
Essentially, you'd be, you would just be scheduling Spanish twice. I mean, I mean, it's not exactly that uncomplicated, but it's close to that uncomplicated, right?
Yeah, I think the, the, the plan, of course, we're getting feedback from building administrators and people who are closer to the master schedule. But the plan would be that if a student was enrolled in the one A course in seventh grade, there would be some communication that would let them know we're going to be transitioning this course to the world language exploratory. You, you know, like Nancy said, if you would not like to be in that, then you can choose other electives. Otherwise, that's what you'll take that this year. And then the next year, you would be able to enter into Spanish one. And then the one B students who, who would need to finish the one, the Spanish course, they're going to, there won't be any change for them. So there's, we're still going to run one B for the students who finished half a year this year and need to finish next year to get that high school credit.
Okay, so, but an eighth grader then who takes, for example, who takes Spanish, they will be, they'll have no other election, elective options, right? Because they would have health via day one, day two, or, or, and then Spanish on days one and two, or no?
I think that when we, again, I, we, we talked about these in, our goal for tonight was to be able to offer proposal and then to be able to, to hash out some of the details. So I don't have all of the specifics that you're asking for. all of the specifics that you're asking for, so I'd have to look into more. My recollection, though, is that essentially, yeah, there is going to be like some level of a loss of a credit in eighth grade, but they gain a credit in seventh grade. Or, I'm sorry, not a credit, an elective. So it, it's kind of a wash, they, they still have the same number of electives, but it'll be which year they get that extra elective in.
That, that's about what I, that's where I was at, so, but it is because we're not changing periods on the day or anything like that, so it's, um, yes, it would be a, however, it sounds like the bottom line is, there's just not, there, there's too many, there's more than one thing wrong with how we're delivering, I think, uh, foreign language right now in seventh across two grades, and one, one thing leads to another, and then also certainly, you know, transients too, um, so, okay, thank you, um, anything else? All right, uh, thank you very much. And, um, I believe that is, uh, those were the only items for education.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, next, we're going to move on to, um, under operations, and that will be facilitated by Donson.
Thank you. The first item under operations, A will be contracts under Wisconsin statute section one eighteen point twenty-two, and Vicky, I think you're going to talk to us about that.
Yeah, this is just really a, a state requirement, so at the next meeting, we will be bringing forward the teacher contracts.
Okay, anything? All right, we'll move on to item B, that's retention, recruitment, exit interviews, and attendance review. Vicky, you wanted to speak first?
Yeah, come on up, please. This is a request, uh, from board member Mills to learn more about our recruitment and retention efforts, um, in addition to information about our exit interviews and attendance. So tonight, we have executive director Mike Freeze from HR and the chief HR officer, Lori Myron.
Good evening. Um, I know that Mike doesn't really need a formal introduction, I think most people know Mike, but one thing you may not know is that his title is actually the executive director of talent acquisition, development, and retention. So when asked to do this topic, um, it's something obviously he's very passionate about. The other thing I wanted to do is just give a shout out to Mike and his team for the past year and a half, they've done just a tremendous job in, uh, process improvement for all of these areas. So from the whole cycle of, how we can post positions to how we can fill positions and everything along the process, as well as development and ongoing retention, so with that, I will pass it over to him.
Evening, everybody, thank you, Lori, very much appreciated, and, and what you'll see tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and talk about this with you and answer any questions that, that you may have. Uh, my name is Mike Freeze, I do work in, in HR, I want to, I haven't been in front of you in a number of years, so thank you again for your service, I know that this, we appreciate the opportunity to connect around, um, this topic. Um, this topic is something that is, as you heard tonight, over the past couple hours here, is super important, right? Um, tonight, uh, primarily going to talk a little bit about where we've been, where we are and where we're headed in these areas. Um, and it's very timely, I think that we have the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The state of Wisconsin, uh, issues occasionally, sometimes annually, uh, an educator preparation program and workforce analysis report, uh, which is important for us to understand, uh, how we are doing as organization relative to what the state of the state is in the state, if you will. And so they highlighted when they released this, um, late in January, some of the areas that they have noticed that, frankly, we've been aware of as well and are feeling, and so, um, this isn't a situation where I want, um, any of you to think that it's the old, hey, misery loves company, that's not what this is, it's understanding what the state of the profession is and, um, leaning into what opportunities we have to keep ensuring that we have a thriving workforce, and so they outlined some of the items that they're paying attention to. And of course, um, we know that we have a very, um, active and interested public and media, and so the next slide, it didn't take very long before they did come out with, um, this is the kind of the summary and the takeaway. Um, and so, um, we, we thank them for that reporting because, uh, as Lori Blakesley knows, uh, we get asked by the local media, um, quite frequently, um, each year, at the beginning of the school year, midway through the year, sometimes at the end, about, you know, how is it, what are we doing, how, how is it going, and so to have this report to balance that and provide some specifics is, is helpful in the reporting so that we can all have a little more common understanding, so that's been nice. Um, and so, uh, in summary, the five big things that the, the article kind of distilled from, uh, the report, I, I would like the opportunity to share with you how we as organization, um, kind of currently have been also working on these things and kind of leave you with takeaways based on these five things essentially. So, you know, they're sharing like, hey, you know, one of every three Wisconsin teachers statewide, uh, will leave the profession within the first, you know, five years. Enrollment and prep programs is down. Required exams have become a barrier to achieving licensure. Not everybody who comes through our program is getting licensed, and even fewer are actually ending up teaching. The salary, median salary has decreased over the past decade, and Wisconsin has issued more and more emergency licenses, um, even though they don't really use that word anymore, they call them licenses with stipulations. Uh, but they're issuing more and more of them, um, than in previous years. Andrew asked this relative to the world language conversation a few minutes ago, and it's true, there are avenues for us to license someone in order to be able to teach a world language. Um, and we've had to look down those avenues in many different ways to try to figure that out. So in, in summary, what, what many of us may be, may be familiar with is that the historical profile of an educator is, you know, as always dedicated and professional, they graduate high school, they enroll in a university program, uh, with, with a certified ed prep program, they get certified in a content area or discipline, and then their license is in a grade range or developmental level, and then they go into teaching. Um, that was the case for many, many folks, uh, for many of our current educators, uh, myself included. It might also not surprise you to know that, you know, the top ten places where our educators tend to come from are our closest, uh, universities in the UW system, as well as Saint Norbert, a very close partner of ours. So historically, we've got folks who follow this profile and come from these universities. About seventy-five percent of our educators fall into that range historically, but it's changing, and it's changing rapidly. Most of our applicants come to us with a bachelor's degree, some have fully completed ed prep program. Often, now though, this is part of a career change. They're not coming right out of, you know, high school and undergrad, they're, they're coming to us as adults who've got a established working experience. Many are then working as an educator, fully employed, um, in the classroom, while also still enrolled as, in a path to full licensure. And we all know that being a teacher is a more than full-time job to begin with. Some of our folks have gone the more, um, historical route, but they have a thing kind of hanging over their head a little bit, it's a stipulation about passage of one of these tests, it's called the foundations of reading test. Mandated by the legislature, it is not mandated by ed prep programs or by our district, but it is mandated according to the law. Okay, so as a result, the folks that we have in our system who are working more than full-time, full-time as educators, right? We've got ninety folks right now who currently have a license with a stipulation that is requiring them to do something in addition while they are working the work. Um, in some cases, it's complete that ed prep program, in other cases, it may be compiling a portfolio because they've shifted their area of licensure to serve in a, a new area of passion or an area of need. As I mentioned, also, we have folks that are working on passing that fort test, okay? Um, in terms of how many people are we talking about overall, if ninety right now within the past couple of years have been on this license with stipulation situation, okay, uh, we're hiring about two hundred-ish a year, and that's been pretty consistent over the past five or six years. So that, those are basically our numbers, uh, as you can see, these are calendar years, not school years, because we, um, you know, we do start kind of hiring, you'll, you've sometimes approved things uh, in the February or March list saying for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, right, and, um, and then it does continue into, once school starts. So our numbers have been pretty consistent with our educator needs. Okay, it's just that the profile may be changing in some cases, and we are projecting something very similar again for, for next year as well. So bottom line is all of this, I think comes together to say, what do we do for our newly hired folks to ensure that they are safely, successfully, effectively, efficiently onboarded and provided continuing support so that they feel like this is where they belong, where they're included, and we can retain them, and they feel like they can thrive in this, this career. And so we have been working on a number of different things, um, as a department and, um, with other departments, to ensure that our processes for hiring are not painful uh, for anybody involved, that they are efficient and as effective as possible. And, and Lori complimented the team that works in HR, it's, it's a compliment really to everybody around the organization who has given us feedback on how to improve processes, and folks who, um, who work in our department and folks at the school and the department level who help ensure that folks when they are hired feel like it's a successful experience. Okay, um, the, the next slide gets into that a little bit, um, to explain specifically how our processes have, have evolved and changed. So, you know, essentially, you've got this process from from request for position to hiring, and, and it involves a staffing request and getting it approved and then getting it posted in conjunction with the job description. Tonight, you approved an updated job description for a position that will be posted tomorrow. Okay, uh, HR puts together all the information that the hiring supervisor needs. Okay, we thank the board for its commitment to equity diversion, uh, diversity, inclusion, and belonging, that October approval um, has helped, uh, lay some groundwork for us as an organization to be not just compliant but committed to that, and it shows up in the job description, in the hiring practices, um, and in the hiring process. Once somebody has been recommended for hire, that does shift back to HR, and then that question of what's the turnaround time in that? Okay, and so on the right-hand side, you can see how we have worked to address and also improve and ensure that the timing from when we want to request a position, how does it get posted? We work really hard at less than twenty-four hour turnaround time on once a position is approved to getting it posted. It depends a little bit on circumstances, because sometimes positions are unique or there's some conversation that happens. Typically, a position is posted a minimum of five days, including the weekend, and typically, um, what we see is once folks get into that screening of applicants in the interviewing process for educator roles, it tends to take one to three total weeks. Once we receive a recommendation, uh, what we do within twenty-four hours is we initiate what's called a conversation with the recommended candidate to start the background process and then working in towards a contingent offer. Those are based on district practices, the law, and our board policy around references and the requirement to complete background checks. Okay, uh, typically, um, we have, uh, background checks coming back very quickly if someone has lived just in our area. Uh, if someone lives, has lived somewhere outside of our area, that may take longer, but we don't let that hold up the hiring process, we recognize that you get to a certain critical mass, and then you always have that contingency that if something comes up, um, I think there are people in this room who have lived out of state, and if we would have made them wait until their background check came back, they might still be living in, oh, let's say Alaska or Virginia, um, you know, maybe that, or I can relate to that, and it's like, okay, okay, right, so. Um, and then, uh, essentially after the board makes the approval for hire, uh, what we do is we issue the contract if it's in a contracted position, and then we shift into onboarding. Okay, these are areas of specific interest by many individuals, we're happy to answer questions about those at the end as well. Onboarding is not a one and done thing, it's not just, hey, here's your stuff, here's your badge, here's your computer, good luck. We have layers of onboarding, and the layers of onboarding include our commitment to the mentoring program and process, um, and the support provided by our, our effective educator, uh, who works in human resources, Marie Visti. We also have district-level department support based on the person's role. So whether it's the teaching and learning department or the student services department, they are all ensuring that the professional learning around uh, curriculum instruction assessment, um, as well as our social-emotional learning curriculum is i- in place for onboarding and continued support. And then at the school or, or department-based level, you have that combination of your direct supervisor, the teams of folks that wrap around that you're part of, whether it's a collaborative learning team or the building leadership team or learning support team or a mentor teacher that you are assigned, um, as well as the site-based implementation of those district programs. Okay, so maybe it's program support teachers, lead special education teachers, department chairs, math curriculum resource implementation specialists, maybe it's a program such as IB where there may have been a coordinator. So this is a kind of at-a-glance view of the supports that are in place for our new educators. The goal is to ensure that they feel not only that they, um, are included, but that they belong here. That this is a place that you want to live and work for a very long time. Tying it back to what I said earlier in regards to the changing profile of our educator, we have recognized and identified that these supports have to be tailored more specifically for individuals based on, in some cases, their licensing needs. So providing access to the foundations of reading test, putting together study cohorts for folks enrolled in the American Board Certification of Teaching Excellence Program, targeting the onboarding by department, so for example, our special education department has brought forward specific professional learning in August and ongoing professional learning so that special education teachers not only understand the pedagogical expectations, but a lot of the paperwork and processes affiliated with the legal requirements of being a special education teacher. Our teaching learning department has worked really hard for our experience-based licensure folks in career technical education to help us partner with UW Stout. And so there's bootcamps that have happened for, I gosh, I think, three or four years now. So, um, that's been a very effective process. And as I mentioned earlier, the final two bullets there, we also have, uh, support with DPI licensing, um, from Marie Visti, she is working with all ninety of these folks, as well as anybody else that is in need of licensing support, to ensure they, they understand that they don't need to do this alone. How do we shift this, though, so that we're not always, um, not, not having the applicant pool with highly qualified applicants, um, who come to us with their full licensure in place? It involves interdepartmental coordination, partnering with our postsecondaries, ensuring that our marketing advertising strategies are targeted, and then having partnerships, not just with postsecondaries, but with other institutions. So we have put on pretty close to the full court press in terms of dedicating resources to, to attacking these areas so that we are not at the back of the line when it comes to hiring, or more towards the front of the line, and we are prominently noticed by folks seeking positions. Okay, so in the next few slides, wanted to highlight a few of the things that we've been doing. We recognize that the future educators in our schools maybe, oh, three, four, five, six years away from joining us as educators because they're in our high schools right now, or in our middle schools. The academic career planning process where students are identifying career clusters, selecting courses as part of their curriculum planning gives us an insight into who in our district who re, because if you're a student in our district, you reflect our district in terms of your family and your community. So one of the quickest ways to diversify our workforce is to connect with our current students and say, wouldn't you love to come make a career here with us? We participate in mock interview events around the area and region, and we've been working with Lori Blakesley's team to ensure that we have a comprehensive marketing plan. We also are working with our current employees, you maybe have heard over the years, there's been different Department of Workforce Development grants. Um, the department that Amy Fish, uh, works in, she helps identify ways that we can partner to access funds to support the career improvement opportunities or career ladder opportunities for our existing staff, in fact, shout out to the fifteen folks that are currently in our master's degree program right now, tuning in, probably counting the number of times I say, uh, um, they're having class tonight and they're tuning in as part of their first class, uh, with EWGB Contemporary Issues and Historical Perspectives in Education. So thank you for joining us tonight, you have at least fifteen people watching on YouTube tonight, right? So this is a, an example of how do we promote this for our students. Um, Nancy and the teaching and learning team and the way they, they explain this for anybody who wants to be part of the education pathway, it shows them what courses they can take to be on the right path. Working with our postsecondary partners, we have thirty-one separate affiliation agreements with postsecondary schools. We offer student-teacher orientation, Marie and Kaylee from our department hosted a career learning lab last week where our current student teachers who wanted to have interview and resume, um, touch up and practice, and most importantly for us, the opportunity to complete their profile and get started on the application within WECAN, which is generally the statewide application network. Um, we have been learning that the universities do what they can to support this from a career services standpoint, but our insider information on how to navigate WECAN has proven to be pretty helpful, actually. They run a Google classroom for our student teachers and they provide them the opportunity to be certified as substitutes. So if they're with us their first semester, or if they graduate at semester, or if they're with us as sophomores or juniors under the state law, they can actually sub for us. And so these are things that we're doing. In addition to, I gotta tell you, uh, Superintendent Byers' idea of reaching out just with that personal touch email has yielded a lot of folks feeling like they do belong here. And this is a place they, they feel included and they appreciate it. So thank you for doing that, Vicki. We have a seat at the table on various advisory boards and we're supporting um, connecting and changing and influencing the way the programs develop at post-secondary's. And then when it gets to the actual marketing standpoint, WECAN is the main broadcasting advertising network for education. But we do leverage other platforms such as Indeed, Handshake is a platform, you may have noticed billboards out on forty-one this summer, positioned strategically by the EAA exit. The social media efforts of the GBAP's careers page on Instagram, targeted ad placement in various school-based materials. So if you're attending one of our upcoming spring plays, musicals or athletic events, you might see a QR code you can scan to learn about employment opportunities in our district. And we are currently waiting for some iPads to arrive that will be installed and we're hiring uh, kiosks that can be moved around that will allow folks to complete a simple uh, education employment uh, application that we can then get in touch with folks, okay? This is a preview of the upcoming uh, print advertising campaign that Lori has helped put together for us. And we also are partnering with the Green Bay Chamber of Commerce. I know my time is short and I, if I had time, I'd ask you all of this. I, I'd, I'd ask you to respond. What would it take for you to move to Omaha, Nebraska? What would it take for you to move to Canton, Ohio? If the answer is just a job, I'd say baloney. The Chamber of Commerce helps articulate what it looks like to move to Green Bay. Where do you live? How, how, what is life like? What do we have to offer? Yes, the career is one thing, but it's a comprehensive package. So we've been working on a partnership with them. We worked last year in a targeted, uh, and then this is not my area of expertise, but using some geo cash targeted micro-advertising based on particular areas in the region, the Midwest region, including historically black college university in Ohio that has an education prep program to try to target individuals that might be looking for, hey, what, where might I want to make my, my career and, and my life as an educator? We're looking at the relaunch of that um, this coming week. And we are trying to emphasize the comprehensive experience here in Green Bay. The state is doing its part to try to develop a youth apprenticeship program for two different education pathways. We've been part of the advisory board on the development of that program. And so we could choose as an employer down the road to host youth apprenticeship students who wish to participate if we wanted to do that as an employer. And we have reached out to, you may have seen the, the neighborworks mortgage program, working with nonprofit employers, the opportunity to support a discount on your mortgage if you agree to, to live and work here. So these are some of the things that we're trying to partner with because um, it is more than just the job, it's also the community that you live in. With all that being said, there are additional points of focus that we recognize that we will not get over the hump when it comes to being the most competitive and attractive employer um, in the education space. We have to find ways to increase our applicant pool. We have to find w- ways to get fully qualified and licensed applicants. We have to make sure that we're really crystal clear on which identified priority programs are gonna you know, result in our dedicated focus on hiring. We have to make sure that we keep staffing our legally required services. Um, and again, thank you for the October commitment because it helps us commit to how do we develop strategies that ensure we are hiring, developing and retaining staff that reflect our students' families and community overall? In order to get there, we had to look at additional data points. And so the additional data points that contribute to somebody wanting to stay so that we don't have that same turnover issue that we see around the state. We do look at additional data points. So the next couple of slides might seem like, well, how is that related? But we believe it is related. And so we wanted to touch on it briefly. We know that when we post our positions and we look at the number of applicants that we have in different areas um, that we can start predicting and forecasting out so that we can maybe get to the head of the line. You may have seen the past couple of years, we've offered some early retirement notification incentives. It was just so that we could understand where our retirees might be. Not to push anybody out, but to understand a little earlier, where might those retirements be so that we could get some positions posted and maybe hire some of our December graduates on to-be-assigned contracts or encourage them to, to apply as quickly as possible because we forecast an opening. So we have run midsemester hiring fairs the past two years based on those early retirement notification listings. Okay, that being said, our applicant pool has dropped. Uh, we believe some of that is due to the COVID stretch. Just two samples of this. Elementary, middle applicants have been down the past few years. Um, we also see that we're struggling a little bit in the area now of getting enough applicants in cross-categorical special education areas. So we're monitoring this to try to figure out how can we improve the applicant numbers. We also look at, we have data that we report out to the state and we report out to the equal opportunity um, or the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And so we've been trying to look at if we have a commitment to diversifying our workforce, what's our baseline data looking like? We have seen that our baseline data has not changed a whole lot in terms of new hires. Okay? It has also not changed a whole lot in terms of overall educators. We're a little more diverse in the area of school counselors and social workers. But in general, our numbers match the state. And in, in general, our numbers have not moved a whole lot. So this is an area of emphasis. We look at our exit survey data to try to figure out why do people leave us, right? Do they feel like they don't belong or aren't included? Is that one of the issues? We don't believe that's the case based on the data that we have. People may request an extra interview with the HR department specifically. But when we pull this exit data, I know it's a little bit hard to see with the font size, but in the six, five, six years, we've had this um, service, the Exit Rights Company. About seventy-five percent of the people that start the survey finish it. Okay? This survey is not mandatory. Obviously, they all receive access to it. So somebody has to decide, just like when you check out of the grocery store or um, at the gas station, you get a little receipt that says, take the survey and maybe, you know, you'll win something. Um, you know, how many of you fill that out? You know, when you leave in, when you leave the employer, do you fill it out? If you do, is it because you're super happy or super angry? Yeah, you're gonna get some of those, right? Hey, I love the service. I love the opportunity. It was a great restaurant. I'm definitely coming back. Or I hate the service. I hate the food. I'm never coming back. You get, you get some of those, right? So we look at those carefully. When we get individual responses that have very specific things, we definitely look into that. We have some triggers in the system that allow us to investigate, why might something have occurred and then we can try to figure out, do we need to address something? But the aggregate data shows us that the people responding do tend to mirror our demographics overall. We're not getting disproportionate survey completion um, demographically. Um, just over half of the respondents in our exit survey data have been our educators. Okay, so this, we can pull this in for all, all groups of employees. On the next slide, we actually have the ability to break it down. The three categories that you're seeing would be um, there's eleven hundred and sixty-four respondents who are Green Bay Public School employees across all worker groups. If we filter it just by the teachers, that's six hundred and thirty. And then it actually compares it to what is the, the normed amounts for any company that uses this company's service, right? So you can start to try to figure out how are we doing relative to other companies in the space to some extent. And what we see in general, um, policies and pay and job security make up a larger portion for employees in that with, who are part of this exit right program overall than our staff. Okay? When we drill down further on the next slide, it, we can look at even specific areas. So people are asked, they're asked to select what are all the reasons that they might be leaving versus what are specific reasons? You have to pick a single most important reason. Um, in our educator realm, uh, work hours, policies, supervise, supervision, those are kind of the, the three largest, single most reasons that people select. Okay? Um, when people leave our organization, where do they go? The middle column there on the top, um, about half stay in the same industry. So about half of our folks are sticking in education, but half are the retirees. Right, and a small portion are heading to a different industry. When we compare our folks, what their thoughts are about the benefits at their new job compared to what they're leaving, in general, what we're seeing is that our benefits are very, very competitive and that isn't the main reason why people are leaving. Also, most folks are not getting better pay when they leave us. Okay? So this gives us valuable information to try to decide both at a large scale level, are there any changes we need to make? This sorts of information does influence and impact the conversations that we've had as a, as a handbook committee, for instance, or when we look at um, the benefits types of options. Okay, um, we also recognize that a thing that impacts how thriving our workforce is, is um, the data we get actually from staff engagement by way of our attendance data. I think it's a fair thing to mention as we kind of wrap up, that we look at things like, you know, if people aren't here, you know, why might they not be here? When they're not here, what does that do to the system overall? This is not about judging somebody for being sick. Everybody gets sick, their family gets sick, we understand that. But when staff are out, it does put stress on the system overall. And to understand our absence data, whether it's sick leave reasons or on the next slide, it talks about um, the non-paid, non-medical leave that people request sometimes. When you look at those numbers and when people are present or not present, it does impact the day-to-day operations of a school or a department and it does impact the culture and climate of the school and the department. And so we do pay attention to that data and try to understand how can we create a work environment where folks absolutely do their darndest to be here as much as possible and, and they're not feeling like um, they're not getting sick and they feel like, hey, I want to be here. So that's something that does matter to us when we look at this. Okay? In summary, the five things that were in the article, based on the report from DPI. What are we doing? We provide sustained onboarding and support. We review our exit survey information. The enrollment in the prep programs does impact us. We have strengthened and continue to strengthen our post-secondary partnerships and we provide supports for folks who are in alternative pathways and need help passing a test. For all the folks that aren't coming to the profession, we are increasing our recruiting and marketing efforts and we are focusing specifically on the equity, diversity, inclusion and belonging realm so that folks find that this is a place that they feel included and they do belong. We believe we remain competitive in terms of salary benefits and growth potential for our educators. And yes, number five is one of the biggest stressors right now. There are not people applying for positions in public education in Wisconsin at the rates they applied for in previous years. And I promise you, we are dedicated to working on that every way that we can and we appreciate your support in that realm. So I think that was more than fifteen minutes, Vicki, I'm sorry. Any questions?
Uh, yes, I have a couple, if, and I can't see if anyone else is raising their hand there, sorry. Um, the first one, uh, what type of support are we offering for emergency licenses there? Are we offering um, tuition reimbursement? Are we offering? What type of support are we providing?
Yeah, great question. Um, so our district has um, a partnership, there's only one approved um, out-of-state program by the state of Wisconsin. It's called the American Board Program. We do have a negotiated discount with them. And so then we also have been providing, um, so, so there's a discount. It's not a tuition reimbursement, uh, anything of that nature, but it is a discount there. Um, we, as far as other reimbursements, we don't have that for educators and policy right now. We do have uh, we've been creative with our special education department. They've been able to work through some sign-on and retention grant dollars that folks who, if you're hired as a special ed teacher, you're eligible for that. And if you are in need of paying for your license or a program, you obviously can use that incentive money to kind of address that. Um, and then uh, again, the Department of Workforce Development Grant that we're using, uh, i- is, is providing access for folks uh, to have a master's degree in licensure uh, covered. Those are the main areas that we're in right now.
I have another question if no one else does.
Yeah, you can go.
I have a, yeah, I have a question, but you can go.
Okay, um, in terms of our student teachers, um, student teaching within Green Bay, this is kind of a two-part question. I noticed that I believe it's Madison has almost like a letter of intent signing ceremony, like we see our uh, student athletes doing when they, when they sign a letter of intent to go to college um, with some of their student teachers. I'm wondering if we have something that really heavily recruits our student teachers that are array within the district. I know you mentioned a couple of the things, especially the email, which I think is very simple and genuine outreach to them, which I think is probably more effective than a lot of things um, coming from Vicki, from the superintendent. Um, but I'm wondering if we, if we can bump that up because I, I hear stories, anecdotal evidence of student teachers applying and then not hearing for a while and then they're accepting positions elsewhere. And a, and a follow-up with that is, do you know how many staff members accept other positions? And before we offer them, I'm sorry, potential staff members, before we offer them. And just curious, um, how many Green Bay area public, you're probably not going to know this, how many of our staff members are GBAPS grads?
Those are great questions. A- and, and it is very possible I won't be able to answer fully satisfactorily. I will tell you that we have um, one of the, is it a it's a two-edged, double-edged sword, I think. We have a strong commitment to the staffing process for our existing staff where they have opportunities to participate the way in which we handle displacements and placements through a meet and greet process. And we have folks who are existing staff, they have the opportunities to work into potential openings. That impacts, the downside of that is that impacts our ability to be specific and clear with student teachers when it comes to the concept of, as you said, like a letter of intent. And so we can move forward with hiring to-be-assigned staff. And if another district comes along and says, second grade teacher at this building versus to be assigned in Green Bay. So it, it kind of cuts both ways. And so we um, it's very difficult for us with our current staffing timeline in our practices relative to current staff to commit to the specific spot for somebody in a mid-year hire. Okay, um, but we are improving our ability to target that. When it, with regards to recruiting student teachers, um, when we put out our mid-year posting in November or very early December, we contacted every principal and said, if you have a student teacher, please do a observation and connect relative to if they need a letter of reference. We provided uh, the opportunity for the cooperating teacher to submit the second letter of reference through a Google form. We then directly contacted every single student teacher, and this has been two years in a row, every single student teacher with the direct link to the posting for applying for a position. And then set up mid-year hiring, um, mid-year hiring opportunities, okay? What we concluded from that is that even with those outreaches, we were not successful in the volume we would have expected, the number of student teachers we had compared to how many actually hit apply. So that's why we then put together this career lab opportunity last week to get out there and say, can we help you apply? Can we help you make sure your resume is done? Can we help you navigate that part so that wouldn't be a barrier? And so there, yeah, those are the things we've done e- essentially at this point.
Those are, those are great. I hope we continue on with those efforts because I mean, I think those are really good steps forward to addressing some concerns I've heard from, you know, from the community members and stuff. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you for the questions.
James? Hey, James, do you have a question? Oh, we lost him.
Well, I have one more if James doesn't, so.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna let Andrew go.
That's fine.
Um, thank you, um, really appreciate all this, um. How far do we go back, Mike? Oh, oh nine?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, what I like about seeing you in the um, in this position with recruitment is you've done really a variety of things for us. So you can, you can speak to us, or speak to a variety of, of things where um, and I'm just the, for those, uh, for those, um, for those fifteen people who are watching, um, you're really going to hear from one of the, one of our best tonight with, uh, with Mike, and you haven't presented for years?
Yeah, I think it's been well before COVID, sir, so.
Um, do we incentivize, uh, um, do we incentivize the exit survey at all? And is is the, would the data, and I guess I don't necessarily an answer tonight, but might that's important valuable data, might it be worth it? I'm not going to throw out like a number or anything, but might it be worth it to incentivize, just throwing it out there?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I thi- I think we need to look at that. I think we also need to consider the concept of what are called, um, stay surveys. You know, once somebody's already resigned, they made their choice, right? But why does somebody stay? What 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 do they need, you know, as a current employee? So we're we're interested in exploring that potentially as well.
Well, can you tell, um, I know we've, we've started, um, we're, we're doing more with trying to to grow your own workforce now, um. Before, um, long, long before you were in central office, though, I also, you know, we talked about growing, and I think we're doing something about grow your own, and that's and that's good. Um, are we seeing, are we seeing results, um, already from that, or have we not had the pipeline? Have we not had, how should I put it, uh, you know, clearly organized pipeline law quite long enough to see as far as growing our own?
Thank you for that question. No, the, actually, we do have some good data. There was a, a teacher recruitment grant a few years ago. Um, we also have a number of, um, staff this past year that have gone, they they're working as, uh, hourly, in hourly positions such as monitors that, uh, through a Department of Workforce Development Grant, uh, became certified as paraprofessionals and then shifted to paraprofessional employment midway through the year. And then we have had, um, paraprofessionals this year and last year that have their bachelor's degree, which under the flexibilities of PI thirty-four made them eligible. And so our special education department, when an opening occurred, would reach out and say, are you interested? You know, you're working in, in this school or this classroom, this environment. Um, and so then what support would you need to make that transition? And that's where that, you know, so so absolutely, we're seeing those numbers. It's, that part is definitely working, and and not just in special education. We have, um, some folks who've moved into some of our experience-based licensed areas, career and technical education. So maybe they have an experience working in, uh, construction or culinary, and they have been working in our district in a different capacity, and suddenly they're able to teach in construct, in, you know, in our, our, that, those areas. So we have more than just spotlights, but yeah, we need to work on continuing in that space, I think.
And one more if I can, then I'm, I'm done. Um, the, the, um, state, the state mandated reading test, um. Uh, so I looked, I just looked at it and I, um, thought, okay, I'm, you know, pretty good. Test taker, I've had exposure to education, I'm, uh, not current, but I have teacher license, I'll just, you know, I'll just, how bad, how bad can it be? And I, I quit after five, no, I wasn't a reading teacher certified. I would expect probably a certified s- uh, someone close to a reading teacher certification to probably be able to I mean, unless they are not, I would assume you probably can bust that out, but for a, a science or a math teacher, that's, um, it looks, it looks like a pretty deep dive of knowledge, not saying that that's a bad thing, because I think every teacher, also a reading teacher makes, makes sense, but in my, that test is no joke, I guess is what I'm saying.
We would agree with you, and our post-secondary partners would agree with you as well, which is why they've really worked um, for preparation into their ed prep programs, and then, um, and the state recognizes the challenge, and so they don't limit somebody from getting a license with stipulation and working, they just have to commit to keep making another attempt at it as the years, each year goes by.
James?
So I was just, oh, remarking that the data that you get out of the exit interviews at a great level of detail. I really appreciate that. Uh, from the funnel and the pool of applicants, I don't see the same level of detail that kind of instruments that process. Um, and I'm wondering where, as we look at our equity, diversity, inclusion, um, emphasis, um, if we understand where that problem is, well, you may very well understand where the problem is. As a board member, I feel under-informed, and I don't know if the problem originates in that our professional programs are not um, uh, putting, uh, or graduating, um, diverse that, um, uh, candidates. Or if we're in the process, we may be failing and can improve of getting diverse candidates into the pipeline process in, in a successful candidate, sorry, a successful placements. Um, is there any data set? Um, or any information that we get out of the hiring process that in aggregate can help inform us as to you know, if we as an organization have opportunities to improve, or if in general, the application pool is not a diverse application pool.
Yes, great question. So in the, in the link to the, the DPI report, um, they do break apart by gender and, uh, ident- uh, race, ethnicity identification, who's taking what test and who's coming out of what program, um, places. So that data is available at the state level. Obviously, not obviously, but when, when people apply on weekend, they're not disclosing
Right.
race or even gender. So that data doesn't come to us through the application process. With that being said, um, the data reporting capabilities of the weekend system are very limited, which is why those, that data is so limited. We're working with their programmers to fix that. Um, they kind of threw in those reports twenty years ago as just a throwaway. And, and and now we're pushing them to say, we need, we need to be, we can't, we can't do this work without having more information. So they're working on improving the data fields there. Once somebody is onboarded as a staff member, our staff members, um, identify um, based on various federal identifiers through the onboarding process. And then that data, we're required to report back out in that EEO five or in the state reporting data. So then we can see af- after we've hired them, what the identifications are, but there is a missing portion of this, for sure. One of the things that we think would be interesting to try to solidify, and, um, Nancy in Teaching and Learning and I have spoken about this. When we have our students and we have agreements for our students going from grades eleven, twelve in dual credit over to a university program, what sort of data sharing agreement would exist where maybe the data of our students who enroll in ed prep, we'd have continued access to it? That might also give us some insight as far as internal development, uh, recruitment efforts, similar to what Andrew was asking about. How could you develop that if you had access to that?
So in, in other words, i- i- what I'm hearing is we have an emphasis, you've baked that emphasis into a hiring process. But as far as instrument and, uh, understanding progress towards a goal, there's just not a good way to get sufficient data to determine.
Uh, it's going to be a little bit of, it'll be a little bit of time before, like, we have the baseline data of new hires in each of the past six-year cycles, and we have current data, so we can now mark that based on new hires going forward, um, to see how our commitment plays out.
Okay.
And then to adjust strategies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you had, oh, I'm sorry, Laura, we're gonna let Laura go. Thank you. I'm back on number, or page eleven, or slide eleven, when you talk about the GBAP's hiring process. And within the process, I'm looking for a little bit more, um, we don't even have to go into it tonight if we could, we could even, um, you could share it with me at some point. But we go from the request and approval to the job description and posting, and then it talks about a folder. Um, but I'm curious about how are, what process do we use to determine who receives an interview? What is the screening process? And, um, and then also what, I I guess it's kind of building on what James had asked. What actions are we putting in place other than to know that we have this commitment to EDIB? But what, what actions have we actually put in place in the process?
Yeah, I'll have to, I, we can maybe, I don't know if I can elaborate, and yeah, on the, on the first part of the question. So it's, uh, each step in the journey on this path, right? So the commitment was made by the board in October, uh, we have an upcoming, uh, next steps with the, the Equity Diversity Inclusion uh, Task Force with a retreat where we get to spell out now, we've got the, uh, identified, um, greatest influencers. And then strategies in there, obviously from an HR lens, we're looking at how does that group contribute with some suggestions? Right now, it's a little bit more ad hoc than it needs to be. It's certainly not comprehensive. Uh, there's a difference between, in in our opinion, there's a difference between, um, uh, equitable uh, teaching and learning practices and core commitments as an employer. As an employer, it includes not just a commitment to the law, but you start to see it play out in your policies, handbook, benefits. And that's going to help then give you some insight into, you know, um, to what extent are you an inclusive employer that people feel they belong, right? And so we have lots of room to grow, to develop some of those things. It would be, um, inappropriate for me to suggest that we have those in place or that they're fully developed because they need to be developed more, um, collaboratively than would come just out of our department. So there's that. Um, we do have from during the, um, the past few years, we've had, uh, existing staff that have participated in various, um, uh, opportunities to engage in professional networking and provide their feedback and insight about their experiences as employees. So we have some draft and sample, um, interview questions that focus on how to tease out knowledge, skill and disposition around an applicant's um, proficiencies in equity, diversity, inclusion practices as, as an educator. So that, that is part of what's included. Um, and then the other part of the process that HR does support is, um, as candidates are applying, um, we do provide insight for the uh, position supervisor as to whether an applicant is not qualified or not eligible to be considered based on previous employment history with us, or based on the interpretation of the job requirements, minimum qualifications, and that person's existing qualifications. So those are some of the dialogue that is implied in there, but we'd have to go more in depth to do at a different point. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, do you want to ask your question?
Sure, um, it's two separate ones here. The first one kind of relates into the Green Bay graduates, you know, our alumni in, that are employed by the district. Um, when we were touring one local high school, one of the Green Bay, well, it was east, um, with our daughters, there was a sense of pride as far as how many staff members were East alumni there, and it would just be, it'd be great to see just either numbers or even staff members that are products of our school district kind of share that information if they're comfortable with it. So just another one of those little advertising things I think would be very easy and effective to do. Um, the second thing is, uh, what can we do to support you? And is, and also the fifteen students that are watching this concerns that they're running into, or can they reach out to you? Can they reach out to us? You know, how can we help you out as board members?
Thank you for the suggestion about the alumni. Uh, I think we all, we love that. Yeah, we, we love that. And, um, and definitely, we, you know, as we were, as they work their way through the, um, the master's program at EWGB, uh, we certainly value our partnership with them, and they value, they want this to be a true partnership with us. And so as the students matriculate through the different courses and what their, their needs are, they, they will, we will be in touch and they will, uh, we may show up at one of these board meetings as, uh, um, observers to learn more about different topics, et cetera. So thank you again for that, that offer.
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you, um, pulling all this information, uh, these are things that are somewhat hidden from us and are, you know, and what, and what we do as a board. But to have them shared so thoroughly, um, is actually very, very reassuring. Um, you know, it's just not something that I had a lot of knowledge about. I'm going to leave tonight knowing a lot more. So, um, just want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any more questions? Brian, James, you're good? Okay, thank you so much for joining.
See you in a couple of years. Just kidding.
Oh, please, no. Yeah, so it'd be nice. Okay, the next ida, item on the agenda is enrollment demographic review. I think we have Josh for the next three items. You do, I'm pretty sure I'm right. Sorry.
Good evening. So you may not remember. Some of you weren't on the board yet. Um, but at the same time, we issued an RFI for a facilities master plan. Um, we also requested, uh, demographer services to double-check our work in terms of enrollment projections and really dig deeper into some data, some additional, um, data and produce higher quality enrollment projections and demographic projections. We ended up splitting those services between ATS and R for the facilities master plan. Um, and then cooperative strategies for the demographic services. They've, um, they finalized the report, and I'm here to share that with you tonight for the people at home. I am going to share my screen. So in, in the attachment, oh, man. In the attachments, you'll see three documents. There's one that's EP underscore attend. There's one, um, that's EP underscore live. And then there's another one. So I'm going to go through two of them, the attend one. So this is, these are enrollment projections based on where our students are likely to attend. The live one is basically the same report, but it's focused not on where students actually attend, it's where they live. Um, and then the final one is, uh, what they call a student yield report that looks into housing developments and developable land and, and how that could impact our enrollment in the future and how it has historically resulted in, um, kids that enroll in our district. So I'm not going to go over every page, but I want to kind of point out some highlights. This is not something that you want me reading through here tonight. Um, page by page. So cooperative strategies produced for enrollment, um, projections or separate projections, there's kind of a high, medium, low, and then a recommended projection. Um, it's difficult to see because of the orientation and the size of the page, but, um, if you do pull the PDF, PDF up when, when you have time, you'll see a, a silver bar that shows the recommended, um, the recommended enrollment projections that we adopt. The other thing you'll notice is that it's, uh, it's very close to the internal, um, enrollment projections that we've been producing for some time. So, um, this is a big disclaimer, there's a bunch of stuff that can affect enrollment either in a positive way or in a negative way, and these are, these are some of the reasons. Um, and I think that they just added pandemics as the last bullet, bullet point, but that certainly has probably had the most drastic impact on, uh, this school district's enrollment. In decades, i- if not ever. Um, it, they, they go through here, um, and this, these are US trends of live births. Um, which is kind of interesting if you're, if you like history and things like that, you can see the baby boom, and then there's bust. And then there's what they call an echo boom, um, followed by an echo bust, but we, what you see overall, eh, um, in a per capita rate in the bottom graph, there is a steady decline downwards, um, The bottom graph there is a steady decline downwards um in terms of live birth per one thousand. They also use cohort survival methods, very similar to what I um presented on in our internal um. Our internal projections, so. The way this method works is. You take all the kids that were born, you project how many of them become kindergarteners, and then you have like historical data on how many of the. How many kindergartners tend to become first graders, and first graders become second graders, and so on and so on. You can apply those factors. Um, to kind of project out how um, how you expect the enrollment to go. Um, there's some interesting stuff on the census, so um, here you'll see our municipalities. Um, Green Bay serves eight munis, Green Bay Public Schools serves eight municipalities, the the largest being the um. City of Green Bay, but we've also got Alaway, uh Bellevue, Ledgeview, Eaton, Humboldt. Town of Scott and the town of Green Bay. Um, and on this graph, you can see where our kids come from in terms of the municipalities. I swear I'm not going to do every page here. We're eventually going to get to uh to school level data, um, in which case he'll get get kind of the gist here. Um. Here you see a um. A summary of of residents by age band in each of those municipalities. Um, broken out over the decades. So you'll see uh the year, I believe I can actually read this um. Because it's too small, but I believe it's two thousand, two thousand ten, uh twenty twenty one, along with a trend. Um. Same thing for race and ethnicity um and language, these trends over time. Before each of the municipalities. These are the languages, I think. Okay, um, these are the different kinds of housing available um within each of the municipalities. Um. Family size, no surprise, um, shrinking um across all municipalities. I think that um. I don't. I think that isn't going to surprise anyone. Um, you'll see here, based on municipality, again, um, the kinds of occupations. Financial status. Computer and internet access, I actually I found this one uh very interesting, um, because we've been trying to get at this data. A lot, um. And um. And it turns out uh regardless of the municipality. Um, students are likely to have an internet subscription and a computer um for that matter. Okay, so here we start to get into actual enrollment by age groups. Um, historically. You're going to see estimates here from twenty-two to twenty-seven. Um, these are kind of hotspots where um school age population has changed, so kind of the redder. Um, or is projected to change, I should say. So um, starting in twenty-two, going through twenty-seven, this is a five-year projection. The um, the redder, the spots, the um. The greater the school age population is going up as as you start to get into the blues, that's where um school age population is. Going down or projected to go down over the next five years. So um, one of the neat things about the the work that this demog- demographer did um is they pulled. Building permits. Yeah, for Brown County and uh city of Green Bay. Um. So they are able to see the number of units built in each of the municipalities. Um. Over over the course of the last twenty-two years, um, this is going to become. Um, more important perhaps when we look at the the student yield report. Here we've got um live birth data. There's so much data here. Uh, these are the survival ratios I was talking about, how likely we are to convert. Um. Birth decay, K to one, and so on. Historical enrollment. Um, overall, or I'm sorry, this is by grade level. This is by school. District. Um, a brief history of open enroll in and out, and we've had uh multiple discussions here. It's really kind of leveled off since seventeen eighteen. And you you can see that it by um, these are, this is a table of where kids are coming into the district from uh by school boundary. And this is where kids are leaving by school boundary historically. Um, this graph of parochial um. Parochial enrollment, all the usual caveats a- apply here. We don't have good data on parochial students. We just don't. Um, we find out about them if they need a bus ride or if um. You know, if they're enrolled here and they exit, sometimes we get information that they're attending a private school, so we'll kind of note that in our. In our um student information system. Um, so this is kind of the minimum number of students attending parochial school. Um, there are many hundreds, if if not over a thousand, that we we probably don't even know about. Now we finally get into projected enrollment, as I said, um, four different trajectories here. Um. Again, we've got the high model, the recommended model, the moderate, and the low. So they're recommending just above the moderate. Um. Then you'll see all the same breakdowns that you just saw on the historic data you got by grade level, by school. District wide. And you'll see this for each of the four models, right? So um, the recommended, I think, is a always first. Of moderate, low, and then high. Then, let me get down to a school. Here's chapel, picked picked at random. Um, I swear chapel people. Um, each school is going to get kind of its own report out on the historic enrollment. Um, and then the different tra- trajectories of projected enrollment. Um. So the recommended is always going to be that first one under the the historical, this is color coded so that um. Actually, if you assume that increased enrollment is a good thing, red means good. So the redder, the better, um, the bluer, the bluer. So there are a lot of pages there. Once you get through all of those school-based pages, you're going to get into some more maps in the appendix. So um, you'll see our boundaries, which you should be familiar with as they um exist right now, at least. Um, this is a really interesting chart that's probably impossible for the people at home to read. So if um, please download this PDF at home and and take a look. Um, but this is essentially shows us our intra-district transfer data. So. It has all of our schools on the X and the Y axis, axis. Um. And on one side, it's going to be the resident elementary school. And on the other side, it's going to be the elementary school that's actually attended. That's why you see that big. Bold um diagonal here, that's where those two things match, but you also see um scattered all over the place. Population density, this is kind of a cool one, too. So it's got maps going all the way back to eleven twelve showing um. Where our kids were located um in each of those years. I'm just going to page through because you can almost simulate animation here. To to twenty-three. Oops. That's the end of that report. So before I get into student yield, any questions about that report? Or do you need some time with it? I needed a lot of time with it. Um, if you do have any questions, feel free to reach out to me and I'll I'll do my best. And I still have, um, I'm still in contact with the demographer um as well in case there's anything that um that stumps me. Okay, real quick then. Let's talk about student yield. This this report is, uh, it's still marked as draft, and I'll tell you why in just a little bit. Um, but it's it's good enough um. To uh. To present to you guys here tonight. Um. So this is a student potential report, and it it's really based on the idea that different. Different types of housing um. Yield a different number of students. And it's not just the type, it's the age of the house, right? So kind of the sweet spot is um like a seven-year-old home. Produces the maximum number of kids for the district. Um, and from there, it it kind of tapers off as the as the um. As the property ages. You know what? I have the wrong one posted here. I'm going to have to send, I'm going to have to send it out. This is just the, this is just the section that shows um. That shows the projection based on. Um, different scenarios of new single-family and multifamily units being built um within the district boundaries. Um, one thing I do want to point out. And I'm going to have to follow up with everyone, and I I apologize, this is just a portion of the report that we modified. It doesn't contain the entire report. Um. This stuff in bold here. So as they were studying. Um. How many students or different property types of various ages are likely to yield? They found our district wide average for multifamily. Um. Properties, so we're talking apartments here, was zero point four or five students per unit. Um, the demographer told me that's the highest that she'd ever seen since she's been doing this. Um, and a more kind of normal or average um yield is zero point two. So we're all, I mean, we were more than twice as much as kind of the average district. So I did ask her to to run some numbers out based on. Based on an average, because we're not likely to keep that student yield ratio up that high um as we're developing new multifamily properties. Right? It's going to eventually drop. We can't keep that up. Almost half a kid per apartment unit. Um, school age kid. So it, and again, the the idea behind the this report is um. It's kind of different levels of development, so. And it goes out for a long time, you'll see. Um. To the year twenty-two hundred. Um. But the idea is, okay, what happens if we build fifty homes and twenty-five multifamily units every year? Um, over the next hundred and fifty years. Right? Because again, different properties age differently. Um, and which affects the the student yield. Many of our properties are much past their prime in terms of of student yields. Um, and I think I'm going to follow follow back up with the presentation of the board specifically on. On that, once we remove the draft um status from this report. So several different scenarios here. Progressively more um. More aggressive. And different ways of looking at them here. Um. Any questions about what I've shown today? Yes, Laura.
So did you, how how long has it been since you've gotten this report?
I think we got the first drafts at the very beginning of February.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Um, so that's a lot of, I mean, most people will be intimidated by this, but for you, just for your purposes. And for what, you know, for what you do for our district, which is a lot. Um, how how do you plan to use this data? Like this, this is super interesting. I would like to spend more time with it. But uh, how how is this, how is our district going to use this data?
Yeah, there are a couple of different ways. I mean, the for me personally, the most valuable thing that it did was it um. It affirmed the process we had already been using um internally for enrollment projections. Um, which allows me to trust them a lot better, you know, because we are making. We, you are making um some very, some very big decisions based on enrollment projections. Um. And we want to make sure that you have the most accurate data possible. So that was, that was a good thing. I would say these projections tend to be a little less pessimistic upfront, but more pessimistic on the back. If you're looking ten years out in terms of enrollment projections. Um. So the that's one way we're going to be using them as we're going through this facilities master plan. The same report was um was provided to the architects that are acting as consultants to the facilities task force. Um. To kind of. Project out. So for example, as we're looking for con- tech, construction projects. Um, as part of that facilities master plan, maybe something needs an addition, a gym or whatever. We don't want to use the current enrollment because that project isn't going to be complete until, say, twenty twenty-seven. We want to look at what the pro- the enrollment is going to be in twenty twenty-seven to make sure we're sizing that stuff correctly.
Um, and how, so again, a lot of data. How does, how does data like this at this level? How does it age well? I mean, does it, does it age well generally? Like, you feel like if we looked at this again in five years? Would do you, I mean. Well. I mean, it's a huge investment. I just.
It is, yeah.
What does this look like in five years? Do we, will we still be referring to these documents in five years?
I think we'll likely be referring to our internal um enrollment projections in five years. Now, if these had come back and and said we were totally off base, actually enrollment's going up, or actually you're in much worse shape than you thought. Then I'd probably be bringing a recommendation at some point. That we would continue to do this year after year, because much of the hard work has already been completed. It won't be nearly as much of an investment to do this on an annual basis. Um. But again, this has given me confidence in our internal numbers and uh. I think we're in good shape there.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's go on to item D, E rate access points contract recommendation.
Justin Zacker's online here. Um, he's our infrastructure supervisor. He'll be going over this bit with you guys.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time uh to consider this uh proposal to upgrade access points across the district. So I'll just do a brief overview of the um memo that's attached to the agenda and kind of touch on the important points. So we currently have access points in every classroom and meeting room uh throughout the district. Um, in areas like cafeteries and gyms. With the one-to-one device initiative is, it is really critical that we continue to provide wireless access for students and staff uh throughout our buildings. Um, that being said, Wi-Fi is a consumer-driven technology. A new Wi-Fi standards are introduced every few years, so that manufacturers can keep up with uh consumer device demands. So as uh devices change, uh like phones and uh laptops and Chromebooks, we need to make sure that the wireless access that we're providing. Matches what those devices are looking for in um Wi-Fi technology. So currently, an access point goes from introduction to end of sales in about two years. Uh, the end of support typically happens between year and five and six after it's first introduced. So while access points will continue to function after end of support, the manufacturer will no longer. the manufacturer will no longer release any firmware or security upgrades for that model. So the district previously evaluating replaced access points in twenty-seventeen. So the timing of this request really matches the industry standards and ensures that we're really utilizing our access points uh, to the full extent of their usable lives without sacrificing the technology access. So when we look at the bids we received, uh, we received four qualified bids uh, from three vendors. All the vendors that submitted these proposals indicate that they were able to meet the requirements of this RFP, uh, the department had reviewed the bids and scored them in the following categories. Uh, E-rate costs of products thirty percent, supportability and cost of transition twenty-five percent, respondents and subcontractor in installer qualifications fifteen percent. Subcontractor installer prior positive experience and knowledge of district infrastructure fifteen percent and compatibility with existing network infrastructure ten percent, and then also local availability of the respondent. Uh, another five percent. So I'd like to note that there is one error in the score sheet that was presented to the board today. Uh, CDWG's number one proposal with the locations within Wisconsin score is twenty points, which exceeds the maximum of five points. So this was just a typo and will be corrected to the appropriate score of five points from this vote uh, before the regular board meeting in a couple of weeks. So that this typo also does not affect the total score with this bid. The total score remains the same. So the winning bid, uh, escort was the capital data bid for extreme networks access points. A- as always with E-rate projects, the district is depending on approval of E-rate funding for this project. E-rate funds are reimbursed at eighty percent of every dollar. The remaining twenty percent of the, this project is covered by Department of Technology funds. If budget considerations allow, uh, the district may choose to proceed prior to E-rate approval, but that's not normally how we move forward. We usually wait until we receive that E-rate approval. Uh, so if you guys have any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Andrew.
Okay, so if I'm looking at CDWG two, e- essentially what we're seeing on the bid, on the bid document is that there, there are one difference in the quality metrics, which is, um, new brand versus compatible. Uh, getting a three for new brand instead of a five for compatible. Uh, that overrides that two points of difference when it all shakes out, it overrides um, about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in cost. I guess if, if it was overriding, you know, a couple of percent of the cost, I wouldn't be asking the question. But I guess I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that since it's basically just the one difference of new brand. Uh, you're, there's a fairly high dollar value on it. So I just wanted to hear a little more.
Yeah, a- absolutely. As we learned when we first, um, replaced all the access points in twenty-seventeen, uh, there, there is a, a, a knowledge cost to transition as well. Uh, we, we really have learned that in, in several areas in the last few years as we implement new and emerging technologies. In, in terms of the staff that can support, uh, wireless and network technologies, i- it's really myself and, and one other person in the department. So we spent, um, many years, uh, learning extremes, um.
What does, what does capital data have? What, what, what brand do they have and what would have been CDGWG two?
Uh, CDW, uh, the G-two, uh, proposal was a Fortinet uh, access point. Uh, so currently we don't have any experience or knowledge of Fortinet's uh, products, uh, nor do they integrate a- as easily as Extreme does into the wired infrastructure. Uh, so.
Hey, what's the, what's the, um, what's the brand with capital?
Uh, Extreme.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have, uh, two comments, one, one to Andrew. Um, all of our edge switching is Extreme. Um, as, as well, so there are, there are a lot of benefits to kind of sticking with one um, across the board there. Um, I did want to say to the board, um, if you ever get the chance at the federal level, uh, for advocacy, please do advocate for the E-rate program. We wouldn't have the internet in our schools, um, without the E-rate program. As Justin said, we get eighty cents back on every dollar. There is no way we'd have been able to run five or to forty-three buildings all over the city, drill through all that rock, um, up into Red Smith and Wickbyak. Um, not to mention having, what, it's over two thousand wireless access points, right, Justin? At, at this point? Um,
Yeah.
I, I'd be willing to bet we have the most access points of, of any, any organization in the Greater Green Bay area.
Uh, yes, I'll add the reason
They have Extreme and we tease them.
I, I, I'll, I'll go a little further now. The, the reason I'm able to be there today is I'm at a brainstorm, which is an educational technology conference. Uh, I hosted a roundtable this morning, um, discussing network, uh, infrastructure, including wireless. And one of the questions I asked, just because I was curious and didn't even think about how it would apply for this evening, is how many districts, uh, that use the same, uh, uh, vendor for both, uh, edge switching and, and their wireless and uh, more than half the room a- and, uh, other folks were looking to do that same thing. Uh, breaking apart who you use for, the, the edge switching and wireless, uh, causes a lot of headaches. Uh, it, it's really easy to point fingers back and forth between the vendors, uh, when, when there's an issue. So it, it really uh, is a benefit to the district that we're able to keep the same, same vendor as well.
Um, yeah, when I, yeah, when I just, uh, I figured there was something like that behind it. I just needed to hear it. For, for it gets a a really good product, but mi- mixing and matching with stuff you already have is, uh, is, you know, if I was, if you're building a brand new from scratch, Fortigate would be worth a look, but um, mixing, you know, that would cost you more than, that would cost us more than three-hundred-thousand dollars worth of trouble to, to intermix, yeah, like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we, e- every, every time we get these bids, uh, the price is very important. We do always consider that. Staying locked in with one, uh, vendor is never, uh, never the best decision, but it always has to be a consideration.
Okay. We still need you, don't we? Oh, Vicky's doing the facilities. Okay. So next is the facilities referendum updates.
Thank you. I was hoping we could use this time to talk about offering a listening session sometime in May. The plan right now is for the task force to provide their recommendations at the work session in May. That would be May eighth. And then we would spend the next four weeks collecting feedback from the community. And the thought was, it would be appropriate to call out a specific day, an event and say that we would like the public to come and, uh, similar to an open forum. As people entered, if they wanted to speak, they would be given a number and then, um, we would call off the numbers. They would get three minutes to present their position or information that they feel would be pertinent to the board for making your decision. So, uh, Lori Blakesley and I were talking and she had suggested, uh, perhaps a Wednesday in May. And then we could work on location as well. What do you think?
Yeah, Vicky, that was gonna be my question about location, because I have a feeling there would be strong attendance at this, so, um, would we be looking at one of the high school locations or maybe even the Brown County Library or a central location with that?
Yeah, we, we thought one of our schools would be appropriate.
So Vicky, I'm obviously on board with this, right? I think it's a great idea. Um, some of the feedback that, uh, I've received, I'm sure the board, everyone has received, has been in the form of questions, right? They've been questioning certain things. Um, so i- in structuring the listening session, um, if we were able to also, you know, make sure that, that there's the structure, allow people to, you know, address concerns, but, you know, we, in public comment, we don't engage with, we can't ask follow-up questions or whatever. I just would like a structure where people truly feel heard, because if we don't understand, we're able to follow up or make sure that we at least have an understanding of the concerns. Sometimes I feel like both parties as a board member and as a person speaking in front of the board, there's dissatisfaction uh, at some point, because we're not able to ask clarifying questions. They're not able to ask us questions. And so I don't know exactly how to do that, but just for consideration.
Um, Lori Blakesley's gonna, um, uh, join us at the board. Do you have some thoughts, Lori?
I was gonna say, I'd probably want to talk to Melissa about it, just to find out how we would post that, um, as well as how we would manage it, right? I think that, um, when we've, uh, so my thought process about this had been sort of how we had done our listening sessions during COVID, where people had an opportunity to share. We had originally talked about, you know, that people would have open forum at board meetings, but if you remember some of the criticism we got was that, um, open forum would take a very long time and people who are interested in the board meetings then had to stick on a really long time to watch the board meetings. And so the thought was to, to move this to a, a have its, a separate opportunity. Doesn't mean people still can't come to open forum, but I think by providing another opportunity, hopefully then we wouldn't have those really long board meetings where people who were, were interested in what was happening at the board wouldn't have an opportunity. Would it just be a really late night, right?
This is what happens when I take vacation and I come back and we have lots of new ideas. So, so we've, we've, we've done these before in multiple ways. If we post this as a public forum, there actually, there absolutely can be a back and forth. We have done the public forums with roundtables where people have moved from table to table and have been presented with the information at, for the various different scenarios and then been able to ask questions, get answers at the various different tables. We've done, when we've done the, um, refer, I'm sorry, the, yeah, referendums where people, we go out and we post those and people are able to ask questions and interact. But we've also done them during COVID where, because there's so many people who want to have input and we want everyone to be able to have a voice, where there is limited feedback from the board and the public is able to share their, their input that way. So I think as we work together to cook this a little bit more and I wasn't just off a plane at noon, that we can probably get this um, more structure and, and, and get some, some more ways for the public to be able to provide input and get their questions answered.
So a follow-up to that, um, i- is there any constraints around having more than one? If we have multiple different structures that we want to accommodate where there is, you know, we can do a roundtable in one, but then actually have a listening session in the event that someone just wants to come, say their piece, go, um, that, oh, the district would be willing to allocate more than one day?
Yeah, that was, that was my one concern of, um, when you said that about answering questions is that what I, what I want to have happen is, you know, we have hundreds of people come out and then people are there till, you know, eleven, twelve at night trying to get across what they wanted to share, right? Like that's, that's a fair process either. Um, so I, I want to think more with Melissa around, um, the taking of questions and answering questions. Like we're currently working on an FAQ. I was busy answering some of those today and just waiting for other people to provide some feedback on that, so that, because we are, as questions are coming in on the, uh, feedback form on the website, uh, I'm pulling off, um, questions. Many of the questions seem rhetorical in nature, so those I haven't really been trying to address as much as the ones that are specifically questions about, you know, uh, for example, um, there's a concern around programming. What does closing a school do to certain programming that's at a school? Um, there might be concerns about, um, WIA eligibility if a student gets relocated to another school. So to me, those are specific questions people have versus sort of kind of asking questions or rhetorical nature regarding the topic, right? So I've been trying to pull those off so that we can get those answered. So again, I think Melissa and I can come up with something if you're really looking for a way to, um, uh, answer those questions. I just want to make sure that, um, we, we do this in a way that people, again, are, are there so late at night that they felt like they either had to leave, you're right, they had to get home, go home, get kids in bed or things like that, and weren't able to stay there to have their voice heard, so.
Um, yeah, I think whether it's two, whether it's three, whether it's multiple formats, the, you know, the public needs to be heard and have a variety of ways to be heard in in person. Uh, this is, this is pretty heavy duty and, you know, alternatives are fine for some people, but there may be, you know, people and groups of people who want to make their case and that's their right. And I think part of life as a board member, when you're doing this is to, you know, I would say there's probably two times to plan to be really busy, really late a lot of the time, and that's the hiring of a superintendent, which we just successfully completed. And then there's, there's this, right? Buildings and boundaries. So I think we just need to be ready to be busy and maybe have many, many people. Uh, some people may want to sit there for hours if there's a hundred people, but I think we have to, the, the back and forth is important to me too.
Then maybe the next step is we'll, we'll figure out a way to have a conversation about narrowing dates down and format and, um, then bring that to the next board meeting.
Vicky, I have a question on this as well. Um, would this be, uh, are you envisioning this on the brick and mortar part of the task force, or would this also engage in programming and bigger ideas with it?
For the feedback from the public?
Yeah.
All of it together.
I would, I would recommend that if we're going to, well, we are, uh, clearly going to do this and probably it sounds like in multiple ways that we start as early in May as possible, because, um, it's gonna be a lot and we're on our schedule is to have this decision made in June. So, um, if we're gonna, the first thing that we schedule should be, I, I, I would just like to make a request. We do this as soon as we can in May. Start the process as early in May as, as possible.
Well, we have a lot of good people to answer all the questions. I'm sure I'm not going to be able to answer them all by myself. Like, who's gonna answer these questions?
So, so Nancy, that's a, that's a good, good point, because if I, if I was not clear, I said I would like to ask clarifying questions and make sure that there's an understanding. I'm with you. I, I'm not gonna be able to answer technical questions uh, to anyone's satisfaction. But nor do I want to sit there and have people talk at me and it feel like we are not empathetic, right? And, and, uh, during, during this, during this process. Uh, so, yeah, I do think that um, if Lori and, and the district can come up with a way to structure the events where it's not, you know, stump the board, right? And, and ask us questions that we can't, uh, answer. But both parties leave better informed, whether that's the, you know, being able to distribute FAQs and resources at these things that inform them of some key, um, facts while we hear them and, you know, engage with them just for understanding, not to answer their questions.
I think we have to prepare for, um, a, a, a person who would come to one of these who hasn't gone to any task force meetings and maybe hasn't visited our website, which is full of information, but is, is deeply concerned about something in particular that's going to change. How, how do we do that? I don't know. I mean, because the ta- I mean, I, some of us have been going to task force meetings and
Some of us have been going to task force meetings and we're in it all the time, but for the, for for some people that won't have been the case, so. And they will have a lot of questions.
So we're just chit-chatting here. And so one thought, my thought as I'm thinking might be that. We do, we start off the month with something we did once before was with our safety meetings, which is we did a presentation. And there was tabletop exercises and then maybe you just end it right before the vote with a night where people can just come and provide feedback, right? So you've given multiple opportunities for people to engage, to learn, and then there's an opportunity to just. Provide feedback, right? Because you'll have people who just want to share, right? You know, we've, we've already seen that on the feedback form, right? There's strong feelings, there's strong emotions. All legitimate, right? I mean, I'm very understanding that this is. Concerned people, right? And so, so I just, I want to, so personally, I was talking to Vicky, I just want to make sure that people have a opportunity to feel like. They were heard, right? So that that they knew you heard them before you take a vote. But I, but I do think that when we think about kind of that safety. The way we did the safety things was great because it was a learning opportunity. And then there was an opportunity for feedback that we collected and that was all facilitated, so we might have to look at kind of how we. We manage that, but so that we have good facilitation at the tables and and so that. Nancy doesn't put on the spot to try to answer questions. She doesn't know.
Can we engage the folks from ATSNR? I mean, they're the people who know this better than anybody.
Yeah, we were just thinking that too because they're, you know, the, I think, like Wednesday's night. The Wednesday's, last Wednesday's task force meeting, right, was really good data as far as. Didn't necessarily mean that it helped people feel better about things, right? But it was good data to really show what we're looking at as far as high school enrollment. Coming up and, you know, and just. Kind of how downward that trend is. And so I think having an opportunity for ATSNR to explain that and then be able to answer questions, because again, this is really their expertise. And, you know, and and help people to kind of understand at least why they, because, you know, right? Like, that's the question, like, why are you? You know, and I thought they did a nice job, my thing to explaining why West is being sort of that pivotal school and it has to do with. With it's the smallest school, it has the lowest enrollment and, you know, so if you were to get to a three high school community. You you wouldn't do that with your largest high school, right? You would start with your smallest high school. Again, doesn't, doesn't mean anybody agrees with that decision, just means that, you know, that's the information and that's how they're. Formulating the proposals that they're sharing with the task force, right? So.
I did not get the name of our, one second, James, I did not get the name of our inner-city student council student, but you wanted to speak.
I'm Viva. I thought. While we were talking about like having multiple different, like, formats, I think having a student. Format would be really great because our students are the ones that are actually in these schools that are actually getting that experience. I understand that parents are very concerned, obviously, and community members because they are. These are the schools that they are paying for and that they're sending their kids to. But I think that the kids' voices also need to be heard and their concerns also need to be expressed.
I think we should also point out that you guys are serving on this task force. And it's very important that people understand that we have student voice there. So, thank you. James?
No, I agree. And Laura, I know that there is a certain amount of fear associated with. Individuals showing up that have not taken an opportunity yet to inform themselves and will come. Armed, right, with information or an argument that would be an uninformed argument, but sometimes you can't control when people engage. But once they do engage, leverage it, right? This is our opportunity to make sure that they leave. More informed than when they came. So I do think that whatever we can do to create the resources. And takeaways that that can synthesize and distill. The work of the task force today. Would be very useful because, you know, we all know that this leads to a referendum cycle someplace down the road and we want as many people. As informed as possible.
I mean, maybe there could be handouts. Maybe there can be all kinds of things that people can take home with them and study at their leisure, like there's. You know, that's, if that's the way they like to digest information instead of going to a website, then let's do that, you know, there's.
Exactly.
You know, so, but it's, it's, yeah, there'll have to be quite a lot of variety. But I, there will be people I think who will come and will have, will won't, will come in without any, like, any real baseline. Of knowledge yet, so we'll need to be prepared for that, so. Andrew?
So people having more. You know, the more information people can have, the better. I agree. It's also. Some people are going to make a choice and I don't think there's anything wrong with making that choice that they have. An interest in protecting something that's important to them and are not. You know, may not be all that interest in the whole process. Someone might say. I don't, someone might say, I don't care how much it costs. I want this and this and this to be kept and that is a. That is a valid opinion, too, that needs to be accounted for and. Listen to. I mean, in the end, there's, you know, there's always a. A balance of things. So I just want to make sure it's not. It's not, there's nothing lesser about the person that just chooses to speak about. Their neighborhood school than. It's, it's just different. And we'll have people certainly talking about about both. And that's okay. And that's actually healthy, so.
And and I would say in this process, we have been kind of at the low information process, right? Because it's been. Kind of. Putting stuff on the wall and see what sticks, right? I mean, that's kind of where they've been at, like, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. They did the task force did a survey of the, you know, within themselves, kind of see kind of where were things that took some things off the plate. Last Wednesday, right? Some options which will really help them be able to redefine now sort of where they want to go next. What where ATSNR wants to go next, right? And what they present on the twenty-ninth. We're going to be doing that community survey in the meantime for parents, community staff will be able to take that. That's also going to give us a barometer on. You know, because that's also an education process, right, that has information in there to kind of help people understand. You know, like, there's a chart in there showing sort of what's happening with our enrollment, so people who may not. Have been paying attention to kind of what's happening with the district enrollment, right? Because it changed really quickly, right? When back in twenty sixteen, when we were getting prepared to go up for the twenty seventeen referendum, we were looking at growing enrollment, right? None of us could have predicted that we'd be sitting where we are now in twenty-two, twenty-three with, you know. Almost two thousand less students, right? So, you know, it was a very quick shift. And I, so I think it's it's understandable that not everybody's. Understands that yet because of the fact that it happened rather quickly. And and I'm trying to catch up as to what, you know. We were adding, we were adding classrooms and and those were still, those are still needed on the east side, right? We removed classrooms out of rented facilities, put them back into their elementary schools. So like, that's still all very much needed. But it's still a big shift, right? And so, understand. So I think the survey will also be very helpful and I think as. We get past the March twenty-ninth, we're going to start to be at places after those task force meetings. Or we'll actually have information to communicate and share because they'll be, they'll be starting to get closer and closer to a recommendation, right? We're up into this process, they've just been learning. And, you know, and looking at, and looking at conceptual ideas and so it's. It's hard to kind of put that out there when none of it's necessarily facts at this point, right? It's, it's just kind of, you know. Conceptual in nature. So I think that will help us too as we get closer to when they come forward with a recommendation.
Okay, anything else? That's the end of the operations. I think we go to policy with Laura LW.
All right, thank you. So I will turn it over to Melissa. We have first up a head start COVID nineteen mitigation policy.
Thank you. The federal government has changed the head start requirements with respect to COVID and has instituted. A few changes with requiring a mitigation policy as they move away from. The requirement of universal masking in our head start facilities. The Head Start Governance Council has approved this and so now we just need the school board to review and approve. For purposes of federal compliance.
If everything would be that. Easy. So now we're moving on to be policy five eleven, equal opportunity employment and non-discrimination. I'm sorry, did anybody have any questions about the head start one? Okay. All right, we want to be.
Could we do B and C together because they kind of go hand in hand?
Absolutely, yep.
At the end of the calendar year, the federal government. Passed the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act as well as Providing Urgent. Maternal Protections Act, the Pump Act for nursing mothers. Which provided additional rights for employees who were experiencing a physical or mental condition. Related to or affected from the pregnancy. In addition to the rights they had under the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. And also provided additional rights for employees who are expressing milk for a nursing child. So in large part, we were already doing a lot of what is in the federal requirements. But we did have to just tweak a little bit of the language in policy five eleven and policy five thirty-five point twelve. In order to ensure that the language is in compliance with the new federal laws.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. Okay, lastly, lastly, we'll move on to D, policy seven forty-two. Use of district equipment by persons affiliated with the district.
Thank you. This is a new policy coming forward. In the. Past, we have had. Some questions, concerns about the use of. Personal equipment, facilities, et cetera, that taxpayers have bought and paid for by. Either be a request from somebody in the community or employees. And so we just want to be able to have that clarity and consistency across the district with respect to the personal use. We also want to ensure that we are minimizing the district's liability with respect to that personal use. We reached out to our liability provider to make sure that we were putting a policy in place, that's best practice. And they were very supportive in providing the information in order to make sure that our policy is. Legally compliant and again minimizing that additional liability for the district.
Any questions? Mostly, I just want to say that I'm really impressed that how early you got up this morning, flew home. And were still able to function at a very, very long school board meeting. Kudos.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, and also, can I just take, I'm sorry, Laura, you can go ahead and finish up. I'm so sorry that I did not recognize you, the the two of you at the beginning. Normally, I would, I would have you introduce yourselves, but thank you very much. For joining us tonight. It's a pleasure to have you at the table. Okay, if that completes our work, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website. WWW dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight two zero two five. Or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format. And or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.